Spencer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, you are the Creator of all things good. You are almighty and powerful, but you use everything that you despise for your own glory. I pray for a world that embraces revival and leans in on you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, to guide us in our pursuit to live in the kingdom. I pray for our country, state, and city, for all walks of life, so that they may understand that they are special and uniquely made and created for good. I pray for those in our community that are hurting spiritually, financially, through affliction or addiction, and hurt and lost. I pray for our government workers, public safety, and our servicemen and women, and for those who are passionate for fighting for freedoms and causes bigger than themselves. I pray for my colleagues, that you give us wisdom for all matters laid before us tonight. And I pray we become a community that is living through you, your spirit, and life, and that we look to your word, hear your word, listen to your word, believe your word, obey your word. But give me a Father when I fail you. This is your holy name, my prayer.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, but limited in its justness.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, October 17th, 2022, City Council meeting. This is also available online to join virtually. The link is at JeffersonCityMo.gov on the agenda, and there's also call-in participation available there as well. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Deacon?
Present.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Councilman Hensley?
Madam Mayor, before we adopt the agenda, I move to amend the agenda in order to bring the informal calendar and the pending FY23 budget forward in the agenda so that we may take up the budget in between the consent agenda items and the bills introduced. And I may make a few other comments on this as well.
Yes.
Thanks. My motion to amend relates also to Bill 2022-71, which will provide supplemental funding within the FY23 budget for the final year of the compost contract. And I will also request a suspension of the rules on Bill 71 that's being introduced tonight, so that we can also have it third read and voted on this evening. So we will be taking up and passing the budget. We would be taking up and passing the budget first and then supplementally appropriating money for the compost contract almost immediately after passing the budget, but through a separate bill. I can't hold anyone to this, but I would just ask that our votes on amending the agenda hopefully be in line, reflect what our votes on the compost contract bill would be, so that folks can get an indication of potential success on the compost contract bill. I know there are a lot of folks here, many of whom probably have comments on that compost contract bill, and if they saw that there was strong support for it, perhaps they would not think it is necessary to provide comments tonight unless it was absolutely imperative that they do so. So, you know, I think we've all received the message, for sure, about how essential a service our neighbors feel the compost services for our community. And the goal of this pair of items is to allow us to have a fully approved FY23 budget and a compost contract funding bill passed tonight before we even really get on to bills pending items. So it should happen in the first half of the meeting. So I ask my colleagues' consideration in voting in favor of the motion to amend, in favor of the FY23 budget, and in favor of Bill 2022-71 to fund the final year of the compost contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Did you get all those seconds? I think that was kind of unanimous. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Well, that passes unanimously. So if there's any indication from what you said, it looks like that should move forward. And we do appreciate people staying, and they're certainly welcome to still stay and give testimony. But this way, if they are not able to, they'll at least know that their voices have been heard as they have reached out to council members. So with that, any other items under item three this evening? Okay, we'll move on to four. We have two miscellaneous agenda items.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, Councilman Hensley.
Do we need to then approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, yes, we do. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted as amended. Item four, we have two proclamations, "Do Not Disturb While Driving Day," which is this Thursday this week on the 20th, and "Buckle Up Phone Down Day," which is Friday. Do we have anyone here in the audience that would like to come forward for any of these two proclamations this evening? If not, I will read them, and we will still do our buckle-up-phone-down photo. These are two very important days. The first one I'll read is the Buckle Up Phone Down Day. We've done this over the last few years, and this is something that MoDOT has been a leader in, along with the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety. And they are challenging drivers to buckle up, phone down, put your phones down while driving. So whereas the challenge is simple, when you get into any vehicle, buckle your seatbelt, and if you're the driver, put your cellphone down. Whereas 65% of all fatalities in 2021 Missouri traffic crashes were unbuckled. Whereas, traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for people between the age of 15 and 20, with distracted driving being one of the primary causes. And whereas, by buckling up and putting your phone down, you will do your part to help make Missouri's roads safer and save lives. And whereas, as the mayor of the capital city, I encourage Missourians to join the more than 20,000 people and 700 businesses that have pledged to make the roads safer for themselves and others by taking the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge. Therefore, I, carried urgent mayor of the city of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim October 21st as Buckle Up Phone Down Day in the city of Jefferson. So with that, I'll encourage everyone to go to MoDOT's website. If you haven't already taken the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge, it's very easy to do. Encourage your friends and coworkers to do the same, and take the pledge that you will not operate your cellphone while driving. Any questions on that proclamation or comments? This next one is "Do Not Disturb While Driving Day," which is this Thursday. And so there's a lot going on this week to focus on traffic safety and not using our phones and trying to be hands-free when it comes to driving. We should put our full focus, of course, on the wheel, not on our phones. And if you are familiar with the Do Not Disturb app on your phone, I would ask that on Thursday, you engage that app, and I'm sure many of you already do operate with that, so that you don't get the notifications. So this reads, "Whereas, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimate that nearly 80% of crashes and 65% of near crashes involve some form of driver inattention, and estimate that driver distraction is a factor in approximately 4.78 million crashes, resulting in 2 million injuries, more than 34,000 fatalities, and as many as $184 billion in economic damages annually. And whereas, distracted driving claims the lives of 3,142 lives in 2019 alone, and nearly 390,000 injuries occur every year from accidents caused by texting while driving, and about 1 in 5 people who died in crashes involving a distracted driver in 2019 were not in vehicles, they were walking, riding their bikes, or otherwise outside a vehicle. And whereas, a survey conducted by the Advocates for Highway and Auto Safety found that 70% of polled drivers said they used their cellphones while driving, and that number has increased to 86% of the people who use their cars for work, and 70% of survey respondents told Nationwide Insurance they have never used the Do Not Disturb setting or function on their cellphone. So whereas, the mission of the DDC is to promote innovative and collaborative approaches to create a culture of attentive drivers and serve as a central clearinghouse for diverse stakeholders, and to accelerate national efforts to implement short- and long-term interventions that will promote attentive driving and eliminate distracted driving fatalities and injuries, that Thursday, October 20th, is established as the first-ever National Do Not Disturb While Driving Day to raise awareness of lifesaving technology that can be used to reduce cellphone distractions while driving. So therefore, I also proclaim October 20th as Do Not Disturb While Driving Day in the city of Jefferson. Encourage people to commit to using Do Not Disturb technology to reduce cellphone distractions while driving, or simply put their phones away while driving. So with that, I would encourage everyone on Thursday to think about that, put your phone on Do Not Disturb, anything that will make sure that you don't receive those notifications while you're driving, so that you're not tempted to look at your phone and be distracted from the road, and to use hands-free technology whenever possible. And then, of course, Friday, Buckle Up Phone Down Day. So I hope everybody will join me. And you'll see a lot of businesses in town also have some signs that they have, will be putting out this week for Do Not Disturb and for Buckle Up Phone Down Day. So with that, are there any questions or any helpful tips that council has that they use while they're driving to help with that? Or Captain Heisland, anything to add there?
I think you said it best.
Well, thank you. So we want to keep our drivers safe, but also, interestingly, it's not always the driver, but those around them and the people around them that are affected the most, as we know from these proclamations. So let's all do our part and keep our hands on the wheel and not on our phones while we're driving. So with that, we will have council come up, and we're going to do the buckle-up-phone-down sign like we do every year, one thumb up, one thumb down, and we will send this picture in to our hands-free friends. Thank you. Absolutely. All of our public safety officials will come forward to be part of this. Thank you.
Nope, you're good. All right. All right, good.
Right, if you didn't get it right, we'll just Photoshop your hands on that. But I will say that there is also, for high school students, there is a TikTok challenge for the Do Not Disturb While Driving. And we did get Jefferson City High School and Capital City to participate, thanks to Chris Durin, who talked to some teachers. And so we do have our local participation as well. So any of you that know some students that maybe want to do the TikTok challenge to film a little video to show us their best efforts at Do Not Disturb While Driving. Item five, public hearings, we have item A, Bill 2022-66.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map, the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning land located at the 1,200 block of West Stadium Boulevard from CO Office Commercial and C2 General Commercial to C2 General Commercial and RA2 High Density Residential, and accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Ridgecrest Subdivision Section 3, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To locate where we are, we're basically across from JCMG on West Stadium Boulevard, south of Edgewood. You can see the subject property there outlined in blue. So we have PUD to the north and a commercial office also to the north there on the JCMG campus. To the southwest is a commercial office, and then that's leading into a residential zone district. To the south, undeveloped, which is, I believe, part of the same parcel of land, it's designated to be attached residential, probably duplexes in the future, and then some C2 a little bit further. So the area is developing as a variety of uses with the CO and the C2 sort of there along the archeryal. So what the applicant is asking for is actually a lot simpler than what the clerk made it sound like. But they want to take that one parcel and subdivide it into three lots and do a little cleanup on it, too. The purpose is that one lot there that is basically that, property owner wishes to sell it and have it developed as a veterinarian clinic, which is not allowed in CO but in C2. And you can tell that that lot is straddling, or the lot would be straddling, two different zoning districts along the road, then also tap into this residential back here. So the final subdivision plat is basically cleaning up these property lines and basically having it be along the bluff as opposed to right here. And that would make it easier for both the respective property owners to be able to manage their property and have access to it. The zoning action, you can kind of see, basically is to make this whole lot here C2, so the veterinary clinic can build on it, and then the property, as it's developed in the future up here on the bluff, they'll have access to, my cursor's not working, but you can see where it says CO to RA2. That is the final subdivision plat right there. Most of the infrastructure along the street is already in place. The sidewalk would be required to be built when a site plan is being approved. And from there, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Sanders? Seeing none, we will open, I'm sorry, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yes, I just had a quick question. Were there any contentious issues as this went through that?
Not that I recall. I do not believe any citizen spoke up. The consultant confirms my memory.
So it's basically a clean proposal?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we will open the public hearing portion for Bill 2022-66. And welcome, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Just real quickly, the proposal, as Mr. Sanders explained, is to rezone a portion of the property along Stadium Boulevard from CO to C2, which would allow the construction of a veterinary clinic. The clinic that's being proposed would be owned and operated by Matt Allen and Lily Pardo. I believe Mr. Allen currently works at the University Animal Hospital, and he's wanting to open a practice here in Jefferson City. So the current property owners, Tweigh House Excavating, they are the ones that actually filed the application and did the subdivision plat. Once all this passes, then we'd be able to move forward on transferring the property to the prospective developer and moving on with the site plan. The only thing I would maybe mention is, for the veterinary clinic, that is a use that requires a C2 zoning. The clinic will not have any outdoor animal kennels or anything. That would be a completely indoor operation. So should be very little impact to any surrounding property owners, and another good piece of property to be developed that's been waiting for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Any questions? All right, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this bill tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, I'm sorry, the open, yes, the public hearing portion of this bill and take up 2266. Any council discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Bill passes. The next public hearing is 2267.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the voluntary annexation of real property located at the 900 block of Emily Lane contiguous to the present city limits into the city of Jefferson, Missouri, and admitting Section 1-17 of the Code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, defining the existing city boundary by adding one new subsection pertaining to the same subject.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, to orient you, we're out in the west part of town. You can see South Country Club and Old Loman intersection there on the lower right. Emily Lane is coming off of Old Loman Road. This is pretty much south of US 50. The property over to the northeast is actually the, excuse me, northwest is Graves' Menumaker. The city limit line, to help orient you, you can see it kind of coming down here, jets over, you can kind of follow it down there. There is a little, there we go, jets around right in through here. That's a separate piece of property, and then back down this way. To the, sort of where the Graves' Menumaker is, I'm not sure if that actually has any zoning out in the county, but it is being used as a manufacturing industrial use. You can see the storage sheds out there also to the west of the property. To the north, the single-family subdivision there is an RS2. It's a lower-density subdivision. The RA1 zoning there, coming along Emily Lane, is the same zoning that's being asked for by the property owner in their zoning request. It would be the RA2 that would allow up to fourplexes on the property, the same zoning as along Emily Lane there. A little bit more zoomed in there. The property owner basically is requesting the medium density so that he can develop that property into probably triplexes or fourplexes. Their zoning plan does not commit them. It is not a submitted plan. The cul-de-sac would probably have to be developed to city, it would have to be developed to city standards, thus taking some of the property that would be developed into triplexes or fourplexes. The lay of the land would probably not allow more than probably 18, based on preliminary sizing and size allowances and like that, 18 units. They could be triplexes or fourplexes. That's what the property owner wishes to do. He would be, or they would be responsible for all the infrastructure to be developed up there. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, just the same quick question. Any contentious issues as it went through? I read through the planning and zoning. I didn't see anything in there that...
There was a question by a citizen that lives up there, I believe, on Tan Man Court, that his property would be abutting this. And she just had some questions about, would the trees be cut? And we explained to her how we have repairing corridor and buffer yard requirements. And we just answered the questions, and we didn't hear from her again. So that's all I know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing portion, and welcome again, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you again. This proposal is being brought forth by Mark and Julie Gerlock, who are the owners of the property. They purchased that a couple of years ago with the intent to develop some rental properties on that property. The proposal is to zone the property to RA1, which would allow up to fourplex units. Right now, we're looking at probably, for the most part, threeplexes, but the zoning would allow us up to fourplexes. And really, you know, what we're asking for right now is just the voluntary annexation and the zoning designation. That's really the first step in the process. That kind of sets our groundwork on how that would be developed. And really, the primary reason for that is getting hooked up to the sanitary sewer system, because without that, there really is no development. So there would be plans to create the cul-de-sac at the end of Emily Lane and create several lots around that in the future. That future development would come forward as a subdivision plat and then a development plan down the road.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, just a general comment. Many of us have been talking about opportunities to grow the city. This seems like a very good opportunity, good, clean growth, and what we've been looking for. And I appreciate the work you've done on it. And I would suggest or request that council support this. I think it's the kind of things that we've been looking for, and it fits very nicely into our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, this is for staff. Menumaker facility is close. Where is the sanitary sewer in relation to the property we're discussing now and with Menumaker?
I'm not sure where the sanitary sewer is. Paul or Public Works may have that answer.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you.
So, Menumaker, there's, and their actual facility is probably a quarter to a half mile to the northwest. So that's a 70-acre tract that you're looking at just to the west of this property. So it's a fair shot over there. There is a sanitary sewer that serves Menumaker. For this piece of the development, there's actually a sanitary sewer that runs along the north side of Emily Lane and then runs down to Old Loman Road, then kind of goes back around through the lower part of the creek behind the houses on Tan Man Court. Yep, you bet.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this bill, number 67? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Any further discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, appointments by the mayor, Mr. Kroll.
There are two appointments for your consideration. One is Amanda Williams to the Historic Preservation Commission for a full term, and Mike McCarthy to the Police Personnel Board for a partial term.
Any questions or discussion or motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes, and thank you to the citizens who volunteer for our boards and commissions. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests, Capitol Avenue Structural Assessment. Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. I will turn it over to our consultants from all state consultants who have conducted the structural assessment of these properties on East Capitol. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Weber.
Welcome.
I also have Mike Haymart over here, that's a colleague that's helped with some of the cost estimating. So I'm going to do my best with this. And I was asked to prepare something to talk about each structure just shortly, and so I have a seven-hour presentation I'd like to go through with you. So, yeah. So as you guys know, my name's Dave Weber, and I'm a principal and an engineer, and I have about 30 years of experience. Oh, sure. Is that better?
You may want to come even a little closer. That way, even like online, they can, they're able to hear, so.
I'll do my best.
Perfect.
Just, just...
In the back, is that good? Yes, okay, they're saying thumbs up.
I can hear a little bit better now.
Okay, thanks.
So I have about 30 years of experience, and I do about 75% forensic work or evaluation work, and the rest, design work and structural engineering. And we brought on Mike Haymart with GNC to help with cost estimating. And he has more experience than I do, as you can see on the numbers right there. But in July and September of this year, we looked at 12 buildings. One of them burned recently, and so I'm going to go through the 11 remaining buildings that, and I believe that was four, and I'm going to try this, there we go, 407 that is not in the discussion tonight. So I'll try to make it brief, but we have 11 structures to go through. And so what I did was, tried to start with what our process is. And so, as the structural engineer, I did the assessments. Mike Haymart here is an estimator, and he helped with the cost estimates. And I just wanted to kind of talk about our process very briefly before I just start going into discussing each structure one at a time. So there's usually about three levels of assessments that we would do. For example, if you do a really broad walkthrough general condition assessment, that's something that you might do in city blocks, area, up to due diligence and a structural integrity assessment. And where we are with this assessment is where most of them are. If I work for a lawyer or an engineer, insurance company... assessment. Where, where we are with this assessment is where most of them are. If I work for a lawyer or an engineer, insurance company or municipality, typically, we do a due diligence assessment, and that really involves methodically going around the structure, potentially droning, which was done by the city to get an aerial imagery of the roof, because access can be a problem with that. And then we also go everywhere we can physically put our body, including the attic, basements, crawl spaces. So, one of the things that, that we do on a regular basis, and we did on this particular project, was, I can see your problem with the mouse now, we obviously took photographs, as you see. We did some probing as necessary and, and produced these reports. So, and I know, I'm going to keep this very brief, because these reports are pretty detailed assessments, and you guys have a copy of, of all those. So, in terms of the estimation, and I'm going to let Mike talk about that, there's, the key elements I put on the bullet list there is builder grade, going back with builder grade level finishes, and that does not put these structures back to their original condition, and wasn't really intended to do that, this cost. And it was, the cost encompasses the visible or identifiable items, and so because of that, we feel like this yields a minimum cost to bring it back to a livable condition or a safe condition. We're confident that there's probably likely hidden or unforeseen damages that really wouldn't be included in this cost, and you can't discover those until you dig into a structure, especially structures like this that aren't occupied and have basically deferred maintenance issues. There's a lot of unforeseen problems that, that we, we know to be the case from our experience. One other thing these costs do not include is site or yard improvements, and some, a couple of these lots have pretty severely dilapidated stairs and site stairs. We left it to the structures alone. So, these, these costs are, we're confident they're pretty much a minimum cost. Do you have anything to add to that, Mike?
Well, the only thing that I would add would be that these costs, as he said, are the, the minimum that it would take to get them back. We were given the task of a livable condition, so it doesn't address any kind of the structural issues that may run into some of these foundations appear compromised. That's really not addressed. What's addressed is just replacing some drywall or plaster walls, ceilings, roofs, things along those lines that were readily visible to us during our inspection.
So, we just wanted to kind of talk about the process a little bit, and so just kind of try to hammer through these eleven structures. What I did was, is I took excerpts from the reports and physically just plopped them on these slides. So, each structure will just have one slide, and I'll briefly talk about them, and hopefully we'll be done within fifteen or twenty minutes. So, one oh nine Adams was the first structure on the list here, and it was built around nineteen hundred, and it's an unreinforced masonry wall, exterior wall structure. That's URM. And what we found was, is with most of these structures is, there's a lot of deferred maintenance issues. If they're not occupied and the roofs aren't maintained, they just slowly accumulate some pretty severe water damage over time. So, I underlined portions on these bullet lists that, to me, indicate a potential for a lot more cost and potential unforeseen issues. So, these things that are underlined, to me, just by common sense, if you have a termite infestation and you're doing a visual evaluation of a structure, there could be a lot of hidden damages, and that would greatly increase the cost of repairing the structure. So, with this particular structure, the bathroom fixtures and MEP, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing was vandalized and not functional. And there was a termite infestation in the basement that was very visible. The roof and the walls had pretty excessive water infiltration, and you'll see that just being a common theme with these, these structures. So, as far as the dangerous areas on this structure, the rear addition, the front porch, and the stairways were dangerous. So, just briefly, looking at some of these photographs, this, this was stair to the basement. You could see active leaks. It must have rained recently when we went there. I think that was June. I'd have to go back, but that is where there was a fall. Our client, David Helmick, fell down those stairs, and so they looked pretty good walking down the stairs, but that kind of thing can happen. So, moving on to the next structure, one thirteen Adams, and I'm going to just try to keep, keep the pace here. This was built around nineteen twenty-five, and again, this is unreinforced masonry walls, and these were clay tile with brick. Those are very susceptible to water issues as well. There were some foundation issues that were evidenced by wall cracks on one of the corners of the building. The, all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing fixtures were vandalized in the structure. The roof and walls had excessive water infiltration, and the, in terms of the dangerous areas in this structure, the roof and upper-level floor areas. So, the roof was allowing enough moisture, kind of as you can see with these holes, to come through the ceiling at the upper level and down to the lower levels, creating pretty severe dilapidation and soft floors. There were certain areas of these floors you just wouldn't want to walk on because you'd fall through the floor. Four oh one East Capitol. This one was built around nineteen hundred, and URM walls, I'm going to use that, use that acronym here, and the walls on this structure were severely deteriorated, and, and the reason, again, why that's underlined is because when you have an unreinforced three-wheith brick masonry wall, and they're severely deteriorated, like these photos and like, like the report depicts, you can't really say, I'm going to re-point that wall. Repointing, by definition, is you rake out the mortar to a sound substrate and re-point it. Well, when a wall is that severely dilapidated, there is no sound substrate, so you're effectively rebuilding the wall, you know, at certain locations on a structure like this. So, that, that's, that's another thing that would potentially greatly increase the cost of repairs. Again, the MEP items are vandalized, the roof and walls have active water infiltration. Dangerous areas, west walkway, front porch, east chimney areas. So, just to be clear, that particular, these chimneys were falling hazard and, and very dilapidated. And a lot of, of what we saw with these structures as well is, there were a lot of contents in the space. Sometimes the contents were, you know, so much contents, it was very difficult to even walk around in the structure at times, so...
Could, yeah, can I just ask a question on this one?
Absolutely.
You talked about the wall.
Yeah.
The house that recently came down at four oh seven was built three bricks wide for the outside structure and then inside stucco. Are the, is, are these houses built with that same technology?
Similar, except the ones with the clay tile. That's a hollow clay tile unit stacked horizontally with a brick veneer on the outside. So, this is a three-wheith brick masonry wall.
Can I ask one...
Like the four oh seven, yeah.
Can I ask one additional question that pertains to all of them? You talked about builder's grade materials, is that what?
That is a great Mike question.
Well, you talked about that, and you talked about bringing them back to livable condition.
Correct.
Does that meet the guidelines outlined in overlay plan for this district? The, bringing it back to historical...
No, we're not bringing it back to its historical...
No. That is not any kind of custom building, not any kind of custom cabinets, not any kind of custom trim work. That is something that would be similar to what is used in, when a contractor does a spec home or something. It's what we consider a builder's grade. I was asked to get it back to a livable condition, so, no. Preserving or bringing it back to any historical condition was not considered.
Yeah, so again, that kind of goes back to these lower-bound costs. That's kind of the intent.
Yeah, the, the overlay regulations generally only apply to the exterior of the buildings. So, when you're talking about, you know, using drywall and builder's grade flooring and finishes, that's referring to the interior, which isn't subject to regulation by the overlay.
But the tuck pointing and some of that is...
The tuck pointing would be, yes. No, absolutely. So...
Thanks.
So, I think that that pretty much covered. I just wanted to kind of point out, you're, you're gonna, and, you know, when you read the reports, there's a lot more detail, but some, some of these structures had so much contents, it was, you, you couldn't go in areas. So, again, that's, kind of adds to the unforeseen potential cost. So, four oh nine East Capitol, built nineteen ten, and again, unreinforced masonry walls. They had more isolated deterioration on this structure. The mechanicals were questionable. There was an active plumbing leak in the basement, which adds to a lot of structural problems in the basement. There was past fire damage at the east bathroom on the main level, and the dangerous areas were the front porch, southwest chimney and wall area under the chimney, and rear walkway areas. And there was a floor support beam that was fractured, and that creates a dangerous condition as well. And so, for example, you know, the roof dilapidation causes sagging and pulling away of the front porch here. You know, when there's an active water leak, that adversely affects the structure, and you can see that rear walkway there. I tell you, this, this hesitation on this mouse is, is kind of wearing me out. Anyway, so you can see the rear walkway, obviously, that's a dangerous condition as well. So, moving on, we have eleven. So, this is the fifth one at four thirteen East Capitol. It's a nineteen fifteen era structure. Again, URM walls, it was a two-unit rental, apparently in the past. The walls and the west floors were severely deteriorated, and when I mean severely, you can see from the photograph, you cannot walk on the west side of that structure because of the condition of the roof allowing moisture to pass down through the structure over time. And this has this pretty severe termite infestation. You can see the runs hanging down from timbers in the basement, and the roof and walls allowed, readily allowed water infiltration. And the dangerous areas on this structure were the rear east and west porches, and the wall, there was some falling hazards on the wall, bulging, and the west side of basically the entire west side of the structure was rotted outs sufficiently that you, you just couldn't, you could see daylight from the roof and couldn't, couldn't walk on it. So, moving on to four nineteen East Capitol. This was a nineteen twenty era structure with unreinforced masonry walls. Again, this was a three-wheith brick masonry wall. The south wall was translated outward, and again, that's an underline for a reason. There was a lot of severe west wall and floor system damage because of the roof condition, and you can see from that aerial how the roof, roofing is completely gone, and there's just sheathing. And so, in, on this structure, the mechanicals weren't functional, and the walls and roof allowed water infiltration readily. So, the dangerous areas on this one were the rear porch, upper level and basement stairways, and the west floor systems because of this water infiltration.
Dave, can you kind of just define translated outward?
Yeah, so, translated outward just means that the wall is bulging away from the main structure. So, when, when that happens, the wall becomes out of plum, or it's not straight up and down, and it would just have to be repaired by either pulling the wall back or rebuilding the wall partially in place. So, again, and I'm going to iterate what Mike and I talked about. These costs are minimum costs and do not relate to any potential structural repairs that are not readily visibly apparent. So, for example, that bulging wall is not part of the cost. So, four twenty nine East Capitol, the seventh structure here. This one was the, the old funeral home, and so it had a lot of different eras. Eighteen sixty-eight was the original portion, kind of toward the southeast, and then there was a nineteen sixty, seventy, and eighty addition. And the original portion of the structure was unreinforced masonry walls, and the newer additions were concrete masonry unit or CMU wall structure. And most of them had brick veneer, except for the north or rear portions of the structure. The mechanicals were likely not operational. There may have been a few that, that were, they weren't vandalized, like many of the other structures. The northwest area has foundation issues, and that, what I mean by that is this upper corner here. And the front and east porches, as well as some isolated roof structural issues, put this in the dangerous building category. All right, so four fourteen Jackson. It's a nineteen twenty structure, URM walls, masonry, three-wheith masonry. The mechanicals were partially vandalized and not functional.
Excuse me, Dave?
Yes.
I believe this is one fourteen Jackson?
Oh, is that a typographical error?
I hope that's the one that four fourteen is concerned right now.
Let me, you're right. That should read one one four. That's all Mike's fault. Yes, that's one one four Jackson, the eighth structure. And that's a nineteen twenties era structure, brick masonry, partially vandalized, MEP, not functional. The roof allows, and, and walls allow water to infiltrate, especially at the upper level, but also down into the lower levels. And there's some wall cracks at the rear of this structure, kind of see from that photograph and in the report. So, there are some foundation issues at the rear of this structure, and so the dangerous portion of the structure is the rear addition. You can kind of see, you know, the roof detaching from the main part of the structure, allowing a lot of moisture damage. You cannot walk on the floors on this one as well at the rear.
Could, could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me go back.
If the rear part was taken off, would the building, would there be more of an opportunity for that building, or is there still too much damage?
Yeah, so there's water infiltration throughout, and if you look through the report, basically every room has ceilings collapsing and, and walls are, floors damaged. This particular structure had a slate roof, which is pretty rare. You don't see that a lot. Also, it had all wood floors, so any infiltration, and you can kind of, and if you look in the report, there's a lot of photographs, it's, it's a lot of detail, but see all the holes in the roof. So, every hole like that has just allowed moisture to readily infiltrate through all levels of the structure. So, this is, when I say the only part that's dangerous is the rear, doesn't mean that the entirety of the square footage of that structure's finishes are, are dilapidated, Uh, structure number nine, four ten, four sixteen East Capital. This is a nineteen hundred structure again, uh, URM walls. Uh, there's, uh, this was a four unit rental at some point. Um, that's how it was divided when, when we walked through it. This particular structure, as you can see, um, is a great example of, you know, potential, uh, substantial site work that would be needed. That front stairway and rail is really dilapidated and that's really not part of. We tried to keep our costs to the building structure alone. And so, uh, the roof and walls were, uh, dilapidated and allowing water infiltration. And you, you're kind of getting the theme, right? That when you, it's not, when they're not occupied and you don't have a roof, this is, this is kind of what happens with these structures and it happens quickly. Um, so the basement has termite damage. Um, the walls were severe severely deteriorated on this one. So again, it kind of goes to the, goes back to this, can you rake out a joint when a wall is that severely deteriorated? Uh, the MEP was vandalized and not functional. There was some isolated roof framing deterioration and, um, the dangerous areas were the rear additions, the floor locations at the really severe infiltration locations and chimneys and walls and isolated locations. So in this particular structure here at each valley, uh, it leaked. And so every corner you could walk through the floor. Uh, second to last, four ten commercial, uh, four fifteen commercial, sorry. Um, this is a newer structure, nineteen seventy. Uh, it's a newer era. It's commercial in nature. Uh, it has concrete masonry unit walls. Has steel joists framing with wood sheathing, which is really unique. Uh, you don't see that a lot. Uh, the MEP all was water damaged, probably not functional. Uh, the roof was severely dilapidated and you can see, uh, from this aerial, uh, there's no adhesion. It's pulling, it, it's leaking around the perimeter throughout. And so as you walk around the structure at the upper level, you can see all around the perimeter like that. And you can't walk, uh, below that because basically there is plywood sheathing between each joist. So you would, uh, put a foot or your body through, through that sheathing. Um, so the dangerous locations on this structure are the upper floor for that reason. And finally, five seventeen East Capital is a nineteen hundred era building, uh, with again, brick masonry walls. Uh, and it was a past multi-unit, uh, rental. Not really sure how many units because there's a lot of damage to the walls and so forth inside. Uh, the mechanicals aren't functional. Roof and walls infiltrate water. Uh, the walls were severely deteriorated on this one, um, as you saw in the report. Uh, this one was unique in that the basement floor, uh, was a timber floor resting either on soil or in an unventilated crawl space. And so all of that floor, if you look at this photograph, there's a gap between all the walls and the floor. And when you walk on that floor, it, it's spongy and you, you've, the only thing stopping you from falling and hitting the ground is the carpet. And so because of that downward movement, that whole structure is settled down in the center to match that basement dilapidation all the way up, uh, all the floors. So, um, that, that is a probably one of the more serious structural repairs necessary, if you will, of, of most all the structures. And so the rear decks, the front porch, the basement and isolated main floor are dangerous on this one. And so I'm gonna say questions, but, uh, I think that this is as fast as I can make eleven structures, uh, happen.
Thank you for that report. And we will ask, are there any council questions? And then I'll turn it over to Ryan for further, um, direction. Councilman Spencer?
So I understand that your, your task was to put builders get grade materials, which, which, uh, I understand. So to do a cross comparison to rehab to the original type of architectural and construction, would we be looking at between a three to five times the, the cost of what you estimated? Just trying to get some, a number.
That may be conservative.
Okay, that's what I was. Thank you.
I think that our thought was is that, um, just without any value by emotion to say, if we look at builder grade, um, these costs are substantial and they're really, really low end. It didn't make a lot of sense to, uh, try to make it more complicated for what was going on.
The reason why I ask, I, I think some folks out in our community would love to, to get them back to their former glory, if you will, and to kind of give them a little bit of a number, um, to where that may or may not be feasible might, you know, spark or not spark interest from, from the community.
Yeah, and the shame with that is they're past the end of their service life because they haven't been occupied and maintained.
Any other questions? And this, of course, is still, uh, under new business. We'll take this item up. So, uh, if you could stay until then, Mr. Mollman, anything to add on, um, this item?
No, so we've been working on this for quite a while dating, uh, probably back in April was the last time the city council saw this in any substantial way. And so, um, city council asked staff to prepare, uh, some additional information. You know, as, as many people are aware, um, we were ready to take these buildings down, um, back in April and the city council, imposed a process to get more information. This is the culmination of that process. Uh, the structural reports have been available on the city's website. The first set for probably more than a month now, second set for probably two or three weeks. So we, we see this as, uh, uh, an issue that is ripe for decision-making. And, um, you know, the city council can proceed with that decision-making at its own process and its own time. But unless the, uh, unless the city council, uh, makes an affirmative request for more information from staff, we are, uh, concluded that exercise. So, uh, I've prepared, uh, essentially a, a chart, uh, that's been included in the agenda as a tool for the city council. I'm not saying that uh, anything has to happen tonight, but, um, I thought that was a, a useful, um, kind of a index to go through the process and, essentially the decision that needs to be made. I might be happy to expand on, uh, further processes if the city council would, uh, would like me to, but, uh, that's kind of where we stand, uh, as of right now.
Okay, we'll see if there's any questions. If not, under item ten, presentations from the gallery, we'll have a few people, I'm sure, that will be wanting to speak to this item that are with us. And then item eighteen under new businesses, when council will take that up. Anything else on this structural assessment seven A before we move forward? Councilman Fitzwater?
Just a may, maybe later is a better time, but delays are just gonna exacerbate these problems. I mean, we already had one individual, city individual injured. We unfortunately had to send public safety to one of these buildings, I guess, two weeks ago. Fortunately, there was not a problem during that event. And I don't want to put the chief or the police department on the spot, but any guidance as we try to make this decision in regard to public safety because that's clearly something that is very important, I'm sure, to all ten of us and will factor into the decision.
As far as our response to those locations or?
Well, I mean, it, we obviously have flooring and, you know, dangerous situations. We know people have been in some, maybe all of those buildings at one point. And I just don't feel comfortable sending our personnel. And if it's clearly a dangerous situation, but there's a lot of other factors in addition, I'm just trying to get some feedback of, I know you guys will do what, what it takes to get the job done, but.
Right, but we'll also work with, uh, Dave Helmick and those other to give us more insight as to whether or not we can go in. Uh, also work with the fire department as far as if we were to have to respond for some circumstance. We would probably utilize the fire department more, depending on the circumstance as it is, but for them to go in and be able to traverse or repel or if they had to, to assist in any way they had to.
So there's kind of two things that I saw and I do touch the public safety sector from time to time. And, um, one is, is there's people actively living in these structures. So that was clear, just walking around. And two, um, if I had to say, let's say I was a disaster engineer on the task force or something, and I had to tell somebody, well, if it's dark or smoky, where would you go in the structure? Well, when you look through these reports, there's barring maybe one of them, um, there's random locations where the, you'd fall through the floor. And so it would be very difficult to tell somebody, okay, well, here's a formula. Each structure, you can't go here, you can go here. It, it just, that would be really overly complex in an emergency situation. So I would say, for the most part, you really should stay out of these structures unless there's a life and limb situation, so.
Councilman Fitzwater?
With people being in those buildings, did you find any, it, it's two-part question. Did you find any areas where maybe one of them would have fallen through or broke through? And if so, what kind of liability is, does that present for the city?
That's a lawyer question.
If someone gets hurt in one of those buildings?
Yeah, so, um, I would say that I have no idea there were, there, you know, since we had the police with us, um, there, there were no folks in there, but I, I really couldn't tell temporally, you know, when and if somebody fell where on it. I could just see, I'm not walking there because I would fall through the floor. That kind of thing, so.
Yeah, uh, the, the city shouldn't be, um, bear any type of liability for, you know, people to break in and, and fall through. You know, the, the, we don't own these. Uh, we're not operating or maintaining the dangerous condition. Um, we try to keep the public safe and try to keep people out of there, but ultimately, um, any liability would not, uh, reasonably fall on the city in any way. Um, the only exception to that is, is our public safety code enforcement who do have to go into the buildings if they fall and injure. Um, you know, they would be subject to our workers' compensation claims, which are, you know, could be fairly substantial. We're actually experiencing one right now. So that's a similar but different type of, of, of question. But, you know, if, if we had people get injured, you know, on the job in any way, including in these structures, say we'd be liable for those, uh, you know, for those injuries.
And Mr. Mollman, I'm glad you also made that clarification. And while we all in this room know that the city does not own these, I think that's just important. We have, uh, people who may not realize that now that we're showing all of this, that they may assume, make some assumptions that the city owns these. We don't. But we are able, since they've been declared dangerous, that's opened up this possibility for us to do this. And of course, there's dangerous buildings, unfortunately, owned privately like these all around the city. Um, I guess the good thing is there are people who may have an interest in actually doing something about these, uh, for many reasons. So that, I guess, differentiates it a bit from some of the other dangerous buildings that our public safety personnel and, and uh, staff in planning must deal with on a daily basis already. So, um, appreciate the differentiation there.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Um, Ryan, on that same topic, since the city doesn't own them, and obviously they're in the condition they're in, we know that there are, uh, folks in the community, some who have restored homes that were in really terrible condition in the past, some who would like to maybe give it a go with one of these candidates here. Since the city doesn't own the properties, would, and at this point, would they simply have to try to contract for sale with the current owner of these properties?
If someone were interested in, in obtaining the property, yes, that's how they would have to do it.
At this point, yeah. If we, if the city acquired them, would that be, so it, would it be the city demolishing the buildings and then taking ownership of the lots? Or when would the city come into ownership of the lots?
So it could come in, it could come in one or two ways. If the city were to demolish the property, um, we would seek to acquire it. So we would just be, uh, acquiring title to the lot. Um, if the city were not to demolish, uh, these buildings under the dangerous building, so it's a regulatory process, then the city would acquire title through a court eminent domain action, both to the, to the, to the land and to the structure. And then once the city has title, uh, you know, to these properties, the city could then put up the properties for a competitive RFP process, request for proposals.
So your second path there would take months and months and months?
Both paths would take.
Both would.
Yeah, yeah, because regardless of structure or not, the, the eminent domain processes are the same. Um, and so there is a, a procedure that has to be walked through, through the court system, um, that really is, is blind to whether or not there's a structure.
Okay, so obviously we can't negotiate with members of the public for the sale of these properties at this point.
We cannot.
The most we could probably do is allow some time for, I guess, them to try to contact and negotiate with the current owner in order to transfer and try to save some of these.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Unless we were going to go down your demolition or acquisition path.
Yeah, so, so, um, for the best, past year or so, maybe less, um, maybe the past seven or eight months, the city's position is to encourage, uh, private disposal of these properties. But at the same time, to proceed forward with a acquisition process as well. We have seen firsthand of, of some situations where people thought they were able to negotiate a deal and, and, and move forward. And then it falls through at the last minute. That's repeated itself several times over the last few years. And so we, we are currently in a position where we say, yes, go ahead, make the negotiations if you can. Good luck, but we are proceeding with our process, uh, because in the end, we believe that they need to get out of the hands of current, current ownership, whether that be through a public process or through a private negotiation.
And are we, uh, are we underway in acquisition efforts on any of these properties currently?
Yes, we are underway. Um, we have, we are currently taking the pre-litigation steps. Uh, part of the, the ordinance that is on tonight for the development plan for the Capitol Avenue, uh, redevelopment area is one of those pre-steps. Um, and so we are currently, uh, currently working on this, uh, as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
And then the process for getting call for interested parties that the city council would move forward with, uh, what would be the next steps to make that happen?
Sure. Um, so it, it's outlined in the plan that was approved by the city council back in, back in April, uh, which is, uh, available on the city's website. Um, under the Capitol Avenue area plans, um, uh, page. But essentially any properties that the city council decides to not demolish will be subject to a call for interested parties. And, um, it's currently my intention to leave that open for about four weeks. And, and what, um, what that would do is would ask people, anyone who is interested in perhaps undertaking a rehabilitation project of one of these structures, we need to, uh, perform two things. They would need to sign a bid guarantee agreement. Uh, the bid guarantee agreement will basically say, if the city acquires one of these properties, you guarantee that when it is put up for, um, for sale through a competitive RFP process, RFP process, you will make a bid. It will have a price and it will have a project. In addition, uh, the other thing that you have to do, uh, to qualify as a, as an interested party, you have to put up an escrow. The escrow is the greater of five thousand dollars or one percent of the rehabilitation costs that Mr., uh, Baker and his team have identified. Then and only then, do those two things, sign the agreement and put up the escrow. Then you, someone will be considered an interested party. City will not tear down the building, proceed to acquire, and once the city acquires, will put up a bid, and that bid guarantee agreement will state that they have to make a bid, otherwise, if they don't, they will forfeit the escrow amount. So essentially, what that does, that guarantees that if the city were to go through a process to, you know, to take the risk of leaving these properties up, to not demolish them, that in the end, we have someone that has made some reasonable representations financed, backed by some financial guarantees, that they are willing to undertake the project. Because the last thing we want to do is leave one of these buildings standing, acquire it for a, for an increased cost, because regardless of the shape of the building, the court will almost always put a fair market value that is higher on a piece of property that has a structure as opposed to one that does not have a structure. So it would include a premium price for the city. And so the last thing we want to do is pay this premium price and then have no one actually show up to make a bid. So, so what we're trying to do is saying if we're going to go through this extra process, incur this risk, that we know at the end, someone is going to make a bid. It doesn't mean that the city has to accept the bid. All it means is that they will make a bid, and the city council will have the opportunity to evaluate that bid. And if they make the bid and the city doesn't award it, they get their money back.
Could the council do that process as soon as the next council meeting, for example, for the call for interested parties? How quickly can that occur?
It can occur, it could occur fairly quickly. So I don't believe any of these properties have a value of more, that escrow would be more than 25,000. And so these are agreements that my office would draft and the city administrator could execute. And so it could proceed probably within the next couple of weeks if the city council wanted it to.
Okay, Councilman Spencer?
A couple of questions, first to you, Mr. Mollman. To have that escrow account, would we be better off to try to hit the target of closer to what the estimated market value might be deemed by the court? Just so that, I just fear that we'll continually be investing dollars in dollars, because either path that my colleague Councilman Hensley was asking about, those costs are still incurred by the city, the property owner is not going to do the right thing necessarily here. So it's going to be the taxpayers that pay for either one of those options. So I guess I would, just as more concerned about, you know, making a little bit more of a skin in the game process by potential investors or developers to where it's more that fair market value number that they have to hit for the escrow amount. And secondly, to the fire chief, with these dangerous buildings, I know our department are well-trained, they're well-versed with their territories, but can you convey to the council what your response plan would be if any of these structures would be caught on fire tonight?
So we, we have distributed this report to our department, and we were trying to make that part of our in-service training currently, and we've had some, a lot of good discussions recently internally, and talked about, you know, how we would approach these type of situations, because they're out of the norm, and our people are typically, you know, biased for action, right? You know, we want to go in and do our job. And so it's, it's not in our nature to pull back from that, but in these particular cases, I think it requires a different mindset. And so we've discussed that a lot at length. The problem is, you know, whenever you approach a scene like this, we never have complete information, you know? So it's easy in retrospect, you know, to judge actions, but typically, if there's going to be a fire in a building like this, it's usually the result of human behavior interaction with the structure. So whether that's cooking or warming in cold weather, you know, that's kind of the season that we're in. So we have told our folks that you've got to have a really, really good reason to be aggressive and go interior on a fire like this. Not to say that we wouldn't ever, but we would have to have a validated, verified reason to do that, because of the danger. But we also, twofold, I guess, it's the life safety issue, but we're also very concerned about, you know, spreading a fire. A lot of these buildings are built very close in proximity to each other, so, you know, in our will, we call that exposures, and we have a lot of exposures to these structures. So that's also a concern, is making sure that we don't have fire spread. But I can tell you that it's a, no pun intended, it's a very hot topic for us. We're really very concerned about the structures. I don't know if that answers your question?
It most definitely does, and I really appreciate the report. I was really trying to be as open-minded as I could possibly be with these structures as far as, you know, really gauging interest in the community to see if there's any, any interest at all to rehab these. My first role and responsibility, though, is to eliminate any kind of hazards if we can, especially for our public safety. And I guess a follow-up question, Ryan, would be, for our demolition contracts, we already have a contractor in place that removed 407. Are these going to be competitively opened up for bid again, or are they under the, is this contractor available to?
Yeah, so the contractor is currently under contract for every single one of these properties. And so it was, the thought was, is that we would get the bids out, competitively bid, that's how we got them. We actually awarded the projects to two different demolition contractors. And essentially, we said, do not proceed with any demolitions until the city council has made a decision. But we wanted to get those bids out so that the city council would have the full freight of information available to it, including demolition costs, when having to engage with this project and make decisions. And so, so unfortunately, I don't have those demo costs on me, we can give them to you if that's, if you require. But the contractor is onsite, they're mobilized, I believe they are even working today at 407. They have indicated, once the city council makes a decision, and it's depending on which properties and which contractor has the work, you know, in theory, the work could start this week. They're active, they're onsite, they're mobilized.
The one that, I mean, I would feel very, very comfortable with proceeding with tonight would be 415 Commercial. That really doesn't have any historical significance to the area, at least that I'm aware of, that commercial structure. And it is relatively tips the scale as far as the rehab amount, so if that would help us, and I don't know which side of the ledger the contractor is on, if the current contractor is, would be eligible for that one or not, but any, any type of cost savings, cost savings we could, we could utilize would be greatly appreciated from my point of view.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Fitzwater?
I have two questions for Mr. Mollman. If we went the route of the RFP, will there, would there be terms, like dates, put in the agreement that if you're going to proceed with this project, it has to be completed by some set date? And is there indications in there, if you're going to tie up this property, you have the ability to either fund or generate the dollars that it's going to take to, to bring it within that timeframe? Because we've had projects that have not had end dates on them that continue to stifle us.
Yeah, yeah, so the anticipation is that when people are making proposals, that they will include a timeframe in that proposal. That's kind of best practice. So tell us how long you think you can complete it in, probably add a little time just to make, to be safe, and then we'll hold you to that timeline. That's probably the best way, best way to do it, is to include it as a requirement of the RFP, that, you know, in order to have a responsive bid, that you must include a timeframe. Also, some, you know, some evidence of financial capability, I think is appropriate in this particular situation as well. But also include it within the RFP. Now, I just want to remind the council, RFP would only be after the city acquires the property. So we are looking at minimum six months, probably closer to a year, before we get to a actual RFP process, where we are asking, asking people to submit a affirmative proposal.
But the call for interested parties could be in two weeks.
The call for interested party, yes, I know it's a little confusing, but it's, it's, the call for interested party is not asking people to put together plans. It's basically to show that you have interest and you have some financial evidence that you're able to participate in any type of rehabilitation project. And to go back to Councilman Spencer's question on the escrow amount, $5,000 of 1% is, there's nothing magical about that. That is a number that was just kind of discussed internally, trying to strike a balance between it enough to have some financial skin in the game, but also not being so high as to scare off, you know, all but the, you know, very best capitalized potential redevelopers. So, so a target that's closer to a fair market value, we have appraisals on all these as well, in pursuit of the, you know, potential eminent domain action, something that is tied, something to like that. Also, a reasonable number. The 5,001% was, was, the thinking behind that is that it was akin to earnest money that you would see in a real estate deal. 1% is a fairly common amount for earnest money that you would see. But some other number, if the city council wanted to increase that number to further, you know, further, further evidence of financial capability, I think that's a reasonable approach. It's just kind of, you know, balancing those scales of getting those assurances, but also not excluding people that, you know, may be able to do the project at some point in the future.
And my thought process was that, I think there's, there's some folks I think have good, have good intentions to say they want to do this. I think I've even gotten a few emails from some potential interested parties that said they would invest $300,000 to some property. I mean, that would be great, but, you know, we just need to make sure that they are truly committed financially, number one, but also to a realistic timeline, because we are in a really weird market with construction and subs and those kinds of things to where, you know, that timeline needs to be realistic, and we need to kind of work that on both sides. But, so, thank you.
I want to thank Allstate Consultants, Dave and Mike, for being here and giving us the report. We'll move through the agenda, but we will be coming back to this topic, we'll have some public input and come back to this, so. Councilman Lester?
So is Councilman Spencer, were you making a motion about 415?
I know that may come under new business when we take it up, is that correct, Mr. Mollman? Is that the best way to?
That's absolutely the best way to do it.
Okay, so we'll take our public input and then we'll revisit this topic again, so, and we can have further discussion on those, any potential motions. Okay, anyone else have anything before we move through the agenda from council? Okay. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We'll go through the four standing committees that will give us the date of their next meeting, and maybe a summary of their last one if they would like to. Item one, administration.
Our next meeting is going to be on November 2nd, across the hall at 7:30 a.m.
Thank you, and finance?
Thank you. Our next meeting will be this Friday morning, the 21st, at 7:30 a.m. across the hall. That is a departure from our normal Thursday morning meeting for this week of each month. So it'll be Friday morning, and we'll see everyone there.
Thank you. I don't think I have that change. Have we sent out a notice? We did today. Okay, awesome, thank you. Public safety?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a change for the public safety meeting due to the necessity by the police chief and the fire chief. We've changed it from the 27th, which is Thursday, to Tuesday, the 25th, Tuesday, the 25th, at 7:30 a.m. in the police training room.
Thank you, and public works?
Yes, our next meeting will be Thursday, November the 10th. We should have our parking garage study back for the Madison Street Garage, so I would anticipate a lot of the discussion that morning will be on that report.
Okay, any other questions on committees? We have two more announcements. Item B, Fire Prevention Week recap, welcome, Chief Schofield.
Thank you, and we'll show you the first slide up here, talks about the theme for this year, it's Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. So that's the, that's the theme that is put out by NFPA for 2022. And just a few things, we'll go over just some of the highlights. We, you know, we say that Fire Prevention Week is this week, but really, for us, it's the entire month of October, and we spend a lot of time doing different things and taking our fire prevention method out to, to the community. Some of those things, we'll go to the next slide, and we'll show you just some of the facts and figures to date. So we've, we've done 10 of our elementary school and preschool visits with over 1,300 kids contacted. We've done three station visits from schools, coming to the firehouses. And you'll see us also out at some of the state buildings doing some of the fire drills, and that, that's a pretty comprehensive process. We try to hit all the major state buildings, and working with OA to make sure that happens and gets done appropriately, and look for efficiencies. Some of you were at our open house at Station 4 last week, last Tuesday, had a great crowd there, and got to highlight some of the investment that the community, and we appreciate the council's support in doing that project there to hopefully give that station more life, an extended life into the future. Also, Lowe's, as always, has been a great partner for us in Fire Prevention Week and Month, and they've given us 160 carbon dioxide alarms and 75 smoke detectors, and we try to distribute those to people who need those most. So if you know of somebody who needs one of those two things, let us know, and we try to get those out and share those with, with folks in the community. Still a few more things coming up, we have nine more school visits and two more of those drills. Also, you mentioned the buckle up phone down, we're also going to help out with a capital city mock car crash next week, so. Those are the things that we had for Fire Safety Week, Fire Safety Month for us, and happy to share that with the council and the community.
Thank you, Chief Schofield. Are there any questions or comments for Fire Prevention Week, Month? I will say that, hope that everybody in this room, including all of us, will think about two plans to escape, two ways out of every room, no matter what, so please take that home to your families and think very hard about how important that is. So thank you, Chief Schofield. Next, we have the Great American Shakeout earthquake drill. Are we really talking about that? But yes, we are, it's every year, I hope that we all participate. We have Nick Tietzschort here, our emergency management director from the city and county, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me on the agenda tonight. I am happy to talk about the Great US Shakeout, as we have an annual drill every year, and that I'm asking for your support in our participation in this, and getting our citizens and our businesses to also join and join us with this drill. It's going to be October 20th, which is coming up this Thursday at 10:20. And, you know, we hope that people will visit both our Facebook page and the Police Department's Facebook page, who's promoting this, and in signing up for this event so that they can join us and report as to what they did. But I also ask that if anyone who is Facebook savvy would also share with us your experiences as you participate in the drill. It gives us the opportunity not only to know what to do, having our steps of the drill with drop cover and hold on, but also it gives us the opportunity to look at preparedness in what our safety kits maybe need updating, or what we can do to better serve our employees and our citizens. So I thank you very much, and hopefully, we can all have a very good drill this year. I entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tietzschort? I will say that this Thursday at 10:20 a.m., we will be doing the earthquake drill here at City Hall, and last year, I got under my desk and did the whole drill. So when we say we do a drill in Jefferson City, we've learned from disasters past that we practice. we practice our drills. We don't just think about it, we actually put it into motion. So, I hope that you will literally put your plan into motion, whether you're at home, whether you're at work, that you will think about what you would do in that actual situation because it's not like the tornado where you want to go outside and look at it. Like, we've learned the, from experience that we should know exactly what to do wherever we are, whatever time of day. So, we will be doing that right here at City Hall and I imagine that all of you at your companies, I'm looking at Heath, out at Scholastic, y'all be doing it there too, right? And every company or home that you have that you would be doing the same thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. And other announcements, I'll give my, my announcements. We have the State of the City and County address last week. The Chamber of Commerce sponsored that, so that was good to have an update of all the great things happening here. This Saturday, October 22nd, is the Memorial Stair Climb for September 11th. They're doing it, of course, here in October at the Jefferson Building to raise money for fallen firefighters. Chief Schofield, will you be there again this year?
We will be represented there. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it or not, but I'm going to try.
Okay, we always have Jefferson City firefighters there every year and we appreciate them making the climb in their full gear. So, that is the Saturday, the 22nd. Last Saturday was the community bike ride and we ended at Yo Yum's. So, if you missed that ride, you really missed a good one. There is one more show at the amphitheater for the year. It's Napoleon Dynamite. It is Sunday, October 23rd, right? Is that right, Todd Spalding? Okay, so you can go online to Capital Region MU Healthcare Amphitheater to get your tickets for that movie showing. Anything that I missed on that amphitheater?
Well, it's a movie with the cast of Napoleon Dynamite and there's costume contests and llamas and tether balls, so it'll be a great night of fun.
Great, well, I am looking forward to that. I'm going to have to see the movie or see it that night, I guess, so that I know what we're talking about. Any, let's see here, any other council announcements? Councilman Spencer?
I just would like to congratulate the Lady Cavaliers for two years in a row of winning districts in ladies tennis and so they did a great job again this year.
Congratulations.
And, and they say you need to work on your forehand.
I tried to join the team. I really could have helped them out, but they didn't need my help, but I'll try out again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's exciting. Congrats to them. And item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Octavia Ailsworth.
Good evening, Mayor Turgeon, good evening, councilmen and guests. This past week at Lincoln has been very exciting. On Thursday, October 13th, the Project Reach Letter of Articulation Signing and Kickoff was held at Lincoln University. Project Reach is a feeder program created by cyber.org to recruit a diverse body of K-12 students to pursue undergraduate cybersecurity degrees and bolster the U.S. cybersecurity workforce. Jefferson City High School and Capital City High School are Lincoln University's cyber.org Project Reach partners. Also, on October 13th, a reception was held at the Missouri State Museum to recognize Lincoln University of Missouri students who redesigned Missouri Black History panels that are now on display at the museum inside the Missouri State Capitol Building. On Friday, October 14th, the Lincoln University Army ROTC Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony was held at the Soldiers Memorial. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Sweat Pink Fitness Challenge will be held from October 17th through the 20th at the Link. Participants are encouraged to wear pink attire and there will be pink smoothies as well as snacks. The next Lincoln University Missouri River Regional Lecture Series event, The Professional Development of Bench Watching: A Business Professor's Perspective, will be held on October 25th at 6:30 at the Missouri River Regional Library's Art Gallery. The speaker for this event is Dr. Troy Frank, Associate Professor of Business. We would like to encourage everyone to attend the Think Pink Football Game this Saturday, October 22nd at 2:00 p.m. in pink attire as the Blue Tigers play against Nebraska Kearney. And finally, we would also like to encourage everyone to attend the Breast Cancer Awareness: Passion for Pink 5K Run on Sunday, October 23rd. Registration will begin at 12:30 p.m. and the race will begin at 1:00 p.m. at the lower level Link parking lot. Everyone is encouraged to wear pink attire and there will also be giveaways as well as vendors at this event. That concludes my announcements for Lincoln University. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ailsworth. You always have such a great detailed report for us and we appreciate that. And maybe we will have, I know that you, you often email that to our city clerk, Ms. Donaldson, maybe we'll have that shared out to our council and department directors so that we can also get some of those dates, make sure we get them on our calendar, so we'll have that, we'll see if we can share that with everybody. Thank you. Any questions of council? Okay, and next we're going to do item 10, Presentations from the Gallery. And as we stated in the earlier part of the meeting, after presentations, we have consent agenda and then we will take up item 14A, the compost site. So, we have, I want to make sure, I have a couple of names that, that are on here as well. Mr. Bill Farr, then followed by Ryan Davis. Did you all still want to speak? Okay, Mr. Farr?
Good evening and thank you for having me here. First of all, I want to thank the council members for doing the people's bidding and it's not easy and I don't think you guys get recognized for that enough. But I do appreciate you not raising my property taxes here. It's a good thing. What I'm here about though is the compost and, and it was taken out of the budget. I don't know who did it, don't really care at this point. I just need it be considered to be put back in the budget. I know Mr. Hensley's talking about a supplemental budget to get us through next year, but there's a lot of cities nationwide that have made ordinances, even states or laws that ban organic material from being put in their landfills. And it's just a bad thing. It increases more pollution with methane and, and leach fields. It can poison your water systems, but the other bad thing is it fills up the landfill unnecessarily. And having a service that Mr. Sheperly provides for this city is priceless. I utilize it weekly. I enjoy going out there and having conversations in a Diet Pepsi with Donnie. That's my, I'm not old enough to go to the coffee shop yet like some of you guys are. Sorry, Mike. But I, I just would really implore that you guys would consider finding the money somehow, not for just this year, but look at Jefferson City leading the way from Missouri and banning organic material, yard waste in, in our landfill, which is going to disappear, guys, sooner than we'd hope. We've got townships all over central Missouri that dump their trash in our landfill without our control over that and that landfill is designed the last 15 years and I promise you it won't in a few years, including if people start dumping their yard waste in their bins and it ends up in the landfill, that's going to disappear quickly and then our trash rates are going to double or triple for us to send our trash to a different town because we can't find a landfill around here. So, there's many good things to have in the compost here, not just because it's ecologically friendly, but it saves our landfill from unnecessary yard waste and, and I think we already got a great program there. It's, in the grand scheme of things, I don't have $239,000 in my bank account, but you guys do. Hopefully you can find it and we can continue this. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, and next we have Ryan Davis, followed by DJ Drury. Would Ryan like to speak? Welcome.
I'm not really prepared. I didn't know that I was going to be put on the spot, but I've been talking with Holly Stat about Capital Avenue and we currently own 109 Jackson Street and we've been rehabilitating it and we're in the works of possibly taking over 105 Jackson Street, which is the oldest documented house in Jefferson City. We obviously know that all these houses are dilapidated past what they should be and everybody knows that prolonging any kind of rehabilitation, even allowing somebody to come in and prevent further damage, if it's going to take up to a year to, to get through any process of allowing somebody to get to going in there and fixing the roof, the first step I would say would be to stop the leaks and allow people to go in if, if they want to, to put in the bid to preserve it because what are you going to do? Just going to tear it down and then have an empty lot and rebuild something that's going to be modern? It's going to take away from Capital Avenue and, and what I'm investing in the area for, you know? I'd like to keep it, keep it to as historical as possible. We've restored several buildings in Argyle. We've done, we're starting to do some here in town, but I'd, I'd hate to see them go if they have to go, you know, that is just what it is. But if you guys would allow people to put in a bid, if, if they are financially capable, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for your investment in Capital Avenue. Any questions? Next, we have Mr. DJ Drury, followed by Donna Deets. Welcome, DJ.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. Again, thank you, one thing you guys don't get enough credit for is doing the work for many when you're just a few. I know it's hard to hear every different complaint and/or concern and regurgitate that into something that makes sense to everybody else because nothing makes sense to everybody. To come back, I, I strongly agree with Mr. Spencer's idea. I have come to, I believe, every meeting about the butcher properties. I have sent an email to every single one of you in, in like kind of, in a group, hopefully individually as well, myself and several investors that are in downtown. I have 208 Marshall Street that we've been working on for about eight months and the city has been great to work with. Surprisingly enough, I really thought it was going to be a lot more of a stringent process, but so far, everybody's been helpful to aid and assist, come in and, and work with us and entertain ideas that circumvent certain things to make it work, to keep the historic value. It was built in 1930. There is a substantial cost. I agree with Mr. Spencer, three to five times of their cost estimate and I read the first half that was posted, not the second half. I, there are people out there that are willing to do it. I think taking the bidding process and I think we're heading down the right path of asking the appraised value adding the demolition cost, now we're dipping into our bank, your bank pockets even more and the general public's. If you take the bidding process and the people that are serious and have the funds to put out there, let us try because I think you'll be surprised how many people that will. You're going to go through admin, administrative work, but now you're not paying a contractor, letting it sit there, you're going through a year process either way. Do it as the bidding, let us have our chance. That's all we're asking for. Other than that, I, I think it can be done. I'm surprised, I've been in Jeff City for 20 years and to see the sidewalks change, to see the, the pots, I've, I've had the pleasure of talking to the mayor about the, the pots in the last budget and, you know, some people agree with that amount of money and some people don't, but the city is beautiful. I just was at Domenico's two nights ago and a person from Virginia was here on vacation and I talked to Domenico in our winery and she said, you know, I said, what brought you here? What's in Jefferson City for you? She said, well, it was voted the most beautiful city. And I was like, you actually see that stuff? I didn't think it worked. It does. And to stay on that same path, we need to preserve Capital Avenue, we need to try the best we can. I know there are certain rules and, and the aesthetic value is there, but again, from an investor standpoint, it only makes sense to allow us to try and take as least out of your pocket as possible in the general public, so that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. I know you've been here before to testify with your interest in, in some of these properties potentially and I'm glad that you're still sticking with it and interested in coming to testify here. So, Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question for Mr. Drury, but to hit on a, a point that, that you made and that a previous speaker made about one of the challenges that we're facing, especially with preserving these or, or stopping the deterioration. Ryan, since we don't own these properties currently, just like we can't sell them to someone outright, we also can't grant access to other private parties to go perform work on them, correct?
That is correct.
So, as much as we might like to, you know, allow volunteers or hopefully future owners to start caring for the properties that they'd like to purchase until we get complete control of, of the property through, through one of these processes, we, we simply aren't able to. So, again, that's not a question to you, I just, it, it was, I think, I think relevant to some of what you were saying and, and previous speakers. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Donna Deets, followed by Jenny Smith. Welcome.
Mayor Turgeon, council members and staff, my name is Donna Deets. I live in Jefferson City at 720 East High and I'm president of Historic City of Jefferson as well as the city's own Preservation Commission. I was here several months ago when we talked about the homes on Capital Avenue and at that time, Mr. Fitzwater, with the support of other council members, said that the intent of their resolution and work going forward was to find the best solutions to the blighted homes on Capital Avenue. A subsequent resolution was drawn up saying that the city, through grants obtained through State Preservation Office, would help pay for structural engineering surveys, after which time, folks who are interested in those buildings would be acknowledged and informed so that they could start making offers, putting their names in and so forth. I know we've had a lot of interest in these. DJ's a good example in what he's done on Marshall Street, Hillary, or Hillary, Holly, she'll shoot me, Holly Stitt on Capital Avenue and several other folks who have been here to talk about what they want to do and the amount of money that they're willing to spend. Ryan reiterated this evening, that process, we want to make sure that process goes forward, both from an H CJ standpoint, from the Historic Preservation Commission standpoint, as well as the standpoint of us future developers on that. Couple notes for you, I've noticed in the paper when they've published what it's going to cost to take some of these buildings down, they're quite a bit more than the equity amount that would be asked to be put in to help hold these buildings. You know, we're talking about a six-month, maybe, maybe a year, if we can't push it through faster, process, but that money's going to be worth it if the city isn't having to put out 50,000, 100,000, 200,000 just to knock something down. So, if we can start acquiring these in some fashion, start pushing the button and getting it through faster and then working with the developers who are really wanting to do this, we can make a difference on how Capital Avenue works. I'm one of those that bought buildings not knowing what it was going to take, other than a lot of people saying, oh, it's going to take a fortune. It cost me a lot less than I thought it would, you know, and I don't guarantee that for everybody, but it's a possibility. I just want to make sure that we're all going in the same direction and that we have the opportunity to really make something last. There's stories that go with each of those buildings and it's not just the building that's coming down, it's the story that'll disappear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Deets. Any questions? All right, and we have Jenny Smith. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilman and Madam Mayor. I'm here to advocate for Capital Avenue and to ask you to forego demolition of 401 East Capitol Avenue. My husband and I are interested in this property, investing us along with two other potential collaborator, collaborators in renovating this property. The best, excuse me, the best, the best possible outcome for these properties is that they, they become, they land in, into the hands of, of an owner that wants to renovate them. This is good for the city. This is good for Capital Avenue. This takes it out of your responsibility and that investor will have an interest in renovating that property and securing it, keeping it from getting further damaged and further deterioration and keep it safe. On the issue of public safety, I would say that it's been 10, 12 years that preservation groups in town have been raising the alarms about the dilapidation of Capital Avenue and the houses up there and action has been very slow. And as time has gone on, many of these properties that could have been saved even five years ago, they have holes in the roof, water gets in, once water gets in, it's like a cancer. These houses are further beyond repair at greater cost to repair them. So, I'm really frustrated at the slowness of this pro, this process. I'm also frustrated that the city would ask us to put up a lot of earnest money to express interest in a property, but have to wait a year while there's further deterioration of that property. You don't know what you're going to get in a year and so it's, it's really hopeless in many ways to, to expect. ways to expect us to, you know, to go down that route, although, as Mr. Drury said, there are people who will do that. And we do not expect to make money on our investment, and there are people like that. They want to see the house preserved, they want to see this history preserved, they can afford to do it, and they want to do it. So, I would ask you to let the investors have their stab at it, and that would remove you from being responsible for it and put a taxpayer's expense of purchasing the property and demolishing it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, and I would say that we would try to certainly, I'm sure staff will be having the direction to move any process forward as quickly as possible with allowable under the law that we're faced with, that any delay wouldn't certainly be on the city's end. It would just be working through the legal process that the state has outlined. Yes, I think I saw Councilwoman Laura Ward first, and then Spencer.
Regarding the buttoning up of the properties and the escrow amount, if we have interested parties that do pay, and during this process, I mean, I know on the Parsons House, the city did secure, button up the roof, because the roof was compromised, and that is one of the oldest, 1832, that one dates back. So, I think the city may have even taken care of removing both chimneys where they were falling down and buttoning that up. For those properties that we could potentially have solid plans in hand and escrow amount, could the city button up those properties more? Like, I know our ordinance is just for the first-floor windows. Could we go further? I know we did on Ivy Terrace, we buttoned that one up on second floor more. So, that is just my thought, if that would be a possibility.
The city's ordinance, the city's ordinance is designed to abate nuisances and address To the extent, it's an interesting question, that's why I'm trying to buy some time here. To the extent that projects are related to preserving public safety, general health, safety, welfare, and abating nuisances, arguably, yes, the city could take on that project. To undertake a pure preservation project, you know, trying to button up a building to prevent further damage, is a little bit more questionable, whether or not the city has that type of authority.
But that would make it more dangerous, you know, it would...
I understand the theory.
Right. Well, and you have homeless people that are climbing and getting through second story too, which creates potential fire hazards.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, and generally, I think, a court would grant some flexibility to the city to address public safety. So, in most situations, probably yes. Where we do have a problem is because all of these, because all of these buildings have been declared dangerous, have gone through the public hearing process, that have been ordered to be repaired or demolished, our city code says that if the estimated cost to repair exceed 50% of the value of the property, the city's remedy is to demolish. That is a protective policy that you'll see in many cities. Essentially, the theory is that if it rents cities from, I don't like this term, but throwing good money after bat, essentially making some sort of determination at this level, the city should be concerned about eliminating the problem in total, as opposed to chasing the various nuisance issues with the structure that pop up over time. And so, that would, in order to take on a project in a situation where the value exceeds 50%, the value of the project exceeds 50% of the property value, I think we would need a code change. We would need some sort of amendment by the city council to either change that code or to waive that code. And so, that's a hurdle, is, you know, with this particular situation, because every single one of these have been declared to be, they've gone through the process, they are dangerous, and so I think they are subject to that rule. Staff cannot go out and do that.
But that's a city rule, not a state? You're saying we can do that?
It's a city rule, it's not a state rule.
Okay, well, then we will be working on that, it looks like.
So, that would take, but to answer your question, staff cannot do that. That would be something that would have to come down from the city council in order to do that. So, we cannot initiate that process. That's something that we would need direction from the council to undertake.
Okay, thank you, and we'll see if we can move that process forward too. Councilman Spencer?
I'll defer my comments for later.
Okay. That is all that we have signed up. I do have online, there is Mr. Jason Jett is joining us. Do we still have the WebEx up? But I'm not sure that he is able to actually, I know he's watching on there, but not sure if he can, he may be just watching, he may not be on the actual WebEx, but he's viewing it, so he sent a message.
Carrie, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can hear you. Mr. Jett, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Hey, I just wanted to save a few words. Basically, myself and Kevin Callaway have invested in the property on the corner of Lafayette Capital, and we call it Parker's Place. The original owner was Lester Parker, built in 1905. We spent the last 10 months on the back carriage house, so we've had a small sample of what it takes to completely rebuild and revigorate a property-owned capital. Fortunately for us, it was a small thumbprint and a lot of work, decent amount of expense, but now, at this point, it's a very nice building that we're using. I say that to basically encourage you, I heard that you're all going to be talking about this tonight, and the discussion I had, I actually, I don't know the property address, but it was the building that was just taken down this last week, and I was walking down Capitol, I stepped my head in, and I was able to see all the amount of historical trim and woodwork and just amazing pieces that was destroyed by fire and neglect, and it's really a sad situation from the aspect of, we're rebuilding this carriage house, you know, you just can't go to Lowe's or Menards and pick up a piece of wood like that. And so, I was talking to Carrie a couple days ago, it's like, well, how can we preserve at least those pieces? You know, the building is completely unsafe, has a hole in the roof, caught on fire, you have to tear it down. How can you get in and at least save some of these historical pieces, preserve the way Jefferson was a hundred years ago? So, I don't know what the answers are. I know there's a lot of rules, and I know you guys are trying to work your best to make it where it is going to work, but this idea that the 400 blocks of Capitol Avenue, and I look at the map, every one of those properties on the east side is highlighted with a different color with the potential of coming down, and it's just a sad staple there from a historical standpoint of connecting the penitentiary, the old penitentiary, and then six blocks further down to the west, Capitol, losing all the historical relevance within that corridor. We need to find a way to at least preserve some of those. I believe, my personal belief is, the only way this can happen is for the city to take some kind of movement to where investors can actually come in, and most people will not invest unless there's some kind of opportunity on the other side. You've got to follow the money. So, it has to be a way to where they can at least make some kind of money, they can't just donate everything. But make this attractive. What the answer is, I don't know, but I just, I just wanted to stop in, say a few words and encourage you all to, you know, we're at a short, we've got a small window here because the damage is that when any time water gets in, and we have to wait a year or two years, most of these probably won't be savable, but that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for the opportunity for speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. I know you had also previously expressed interest, I believe it was in 415 Commercial, which is one that did come up tonight as a potential that Council may, Council member Spencer could make a motion to demolish. Was that the one that you had expressed interest in?
That's correct, Carrie. There's a couple places that we're looking at, but another question that I have is, it's hard to check a building out when you can't get inside of it, and so, when you're looking at investing potential money, we can read the reports without actually getting our eyes on it and seeing the true damage. It's really hard to bring a true bid or any kind of interest, but yes, 415 was a property that we would like to at least get in to look at, which feel like it could potentially be a good property.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to mention that, is that could be one that may come up this evening. I know that you had mentioned previously that if that one could be looked at, or at least to give you a couple weeks to answer some of those questions, but certainly, it's up to council tonight whether they would do that or not. So, any questions for Mr. Jett?
I just have one comment, picked up something there at the very end. City cannot be granting access to these properties while they're still under private ownership. We have the ability to access under warrants that we have obtained and under our authority under the law to continue to address the nuisance situations that these impose on the neighborhoods, but we can't allow, you know, private citizens to enter this privately-owned property and, you know, tack along. And further with that, I don't think I could craft a liability strong enough, a liability waiver strong enough that would sufficiently, you know, protect against the dangerous conditions that are there. I don't like it, that police and fire and code enforcement go in there, do their job. I don't think it's a good idea to be, even if we could allow private access, I still don't think it's a very good idea, except for those people, you know, kind of post-acquisition, except for those people that are trained to traverse this type of property.
So, there may be something in between where the public won't be in, but we do have our structural assessments and our firm that has gone in, that maybe there is a way to connect people, potential developers, with the experts and have some further, maybe drilling down in details. Couldn't be done tonight, of course, but that if any of them have questions...
It would only be after acquisition, so six months to a year down the road.
Okay, thank you, and we do have, I was going to ask too at the end here if anyone, if I missed anyone in the audience, it looks like there is, we have two hands, so I think Mr., or we have three. So, I saw Mr., is that Gary Day in the back? Okay, if you want to come forward, and then I saw over here in the corner and then over here, so we'll have you come on forward.
Madam Mayor, before I address, I may be at the wrong place, because I apologize. I talked with you about a month ago as to whether or not I could address the council on a specific issue, but this may not be yet finished with regard to your housing. So, do you want, is this the time you take things from the floor or not?
Usually now is when it's about like a specific bill, but why don't you go ahead since you're at the podium?
My name is Gary, last name is Day, D-E-Y. I live at 1434 Inglewood Drive. I live close to Cedar Hill School, so if any of you know that. I'm first of all here to say to each one of you, I served as a councilman in another community, Sadee, Missouri, and I know what you're having to go through this evening. All these decisions are tough, that's what you signed up for, unfortunately, and it would be nice if it was smooth to go through easy way and everybody'd be happy. They're not going to be, and I know this. So, I give you all the kudos up and thumbs up for the job that you perform and the good service that you perform. Secondly, is that I'm not here to address or to attack a particular department or particular individuals. All I'm here to say is you're getting ready, and you're getting very close to summarizing your budgets, and you've almost made all decisions related to that, and especially with what's coming up too with the gentleman who had the comment regarding, you know, where we do our trash and where we don't. But my comment is, is that I drive for a specific company here in town, I won't name that particular company, but I've driven around this community since 1979, and in the past three years, I would say that the condition of our roads are corrosive, to say the least. And because they're corrosive, people talk to me on my daily basis, and I'm sure they've talked with you, about what can be done. And the only thing that I can come up with is that in consideration of future, not this year, because I'm sure we've wrapped pretty much everything up, but in the consideration of future, what I'd like to propose is that you have a three-year plan where we address the community streets, and this is everybody's. I can tell you I drive from 150 miles to 300 miles a day when I do my particular job, and it's all in-town driving. So, I've seen almost every street, I've seen almost every situation, the raised curb situations in this town. There are some parts that are laying still down, two blocks from this building, that have been there on the raised curb for six months. So, I know that those conditions are all over the community, and what I ask for you to do is, unfortunately, there's only a certain amount of money, and unfortunately, it can only go so many places. But I do ask that you give very strong consideration to the departments that deal with the streets in this community, because it's a tough job. It's not easy. We've had a bad winter, we've had rough conditions, and it appears we're going to get maybe, if what they say, another bad winter this year. So, I just ask, and thank you for my three minutes, but I ask that we do take a look at that very sincere in the future for our community, and ask that it might be a three-year plan where we address parts of the community all the way through, and maybe by three years, we can bring the streets back up from the corrosive condition which they exist, because this is my favorite town. I've been here since 1979. I call it the centerpiece of Missouri, and that's what it should be. We don't have to have the very best, but we should be at least the centerpiece. And our capital, we are a capital city. So, that's what I ask that you consider, and I thank you, and good luck on your decisions regarding the housing too.
Thank you, Mr. Day, and I would ask maybe Mr. Smith if he could get your phone number or connect you two, and then that way, you could share our current overlay plan.
I know, Mr. Day, well.
Okay, you've got the number. He could share with you our current plan, and we'll make sure if you see some areas that are not addressed, that may need some attention, we'll make sure that Mr. Smith knows that.
That's why I say I'm not picking on any particular individual, because I know him.
Sure, but he has the info that you two can make sure we're on the same page, so perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, welcome. Thank you.
Hello, and good evening. Sorry, my name's Amanda Burke-Williams. I purchased and rehabilitated 103 Jackson Street from the city. It's been a wonderful experience, and I've spoken to you all previously, and I don't want to reiterate any of the points that I said before, but I have heard a few questions tonight about money and about offsetting money, and I think it's good to also remember that these properties are listed in the National Register, which makes them eligible for the Historic Preservation Tax Credit. That is a 20% federal credit if you're using it as an income-producing property and a 25% state credit. So, if you are interested in rehabbing one of these properties, there are those options if you would like to do your rehab in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards. So, I think that's really important to think about when we're talking about the amount of money that it's going to cost to rehab these properties, that this is an option, an avenue for funding that is available. If your property is not income-producing, you can still use the state credit, and that's what we're doing with our house at 103 Jackson. And so, I think that it's been very interesting to me that we're the only property that seems to be utilizing this source of free money. It's not that hard to put, I mean, it's a lot of work to put... It's not that hard to put, I mean, it's a lot of work to put in your application, but it's well worth it. Um, and so I just wanna sing those praises. I also, um, wanna say as somebody who would like to reside in Jeff City and, and, and our house for a long time, I'm very concerned about what's gonna happen if that whole block, um, in front of my house is gone. Really concerned about what will be redeveloped there, and also that we will lose this history without any sort of offset. Um, a lot of the work that I used to do at the State Historic Preservation Office was, um, in offsetting the loss of historic properties. And so if we're going to demolish these properties, what are we going to gain as a, in, in, in response to that? We're gonna lose all this history, but we need to make a plan to preserve something. And it may not be physically one of the structures or, or, or any of the structures. I'm not, you know, here to talk about that, but I am very concerned that we're going to lose a huge block, um, of our historic downtown, and it's basically just gonna be erased off the map without, um, any sort of offset. And then something could be, I mean, I, I just imagine something like the towers sitting in my front yard, um, and also being in my side yard. It's, it's quite, um, daunting as, as a person who lives there is what might be put in the place of these structures. So I really hope that, um, we'll think about, you know, that you guys can think about and let option for, uh, different developers and, and interested parties to potentially redevelop these properties, um, and use, uh, the historic tax credits, um, if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke-Williams, and you are a direct benefactor of the process of eminent domain that we went through, and the revitalization and redevelopment is something that you personally, you and your family, uh, invested in and did a, a beautiful renovation of the Standish House. But that's something to think about, just how long we've been going through this process is that you were one of those that was able to take a property, and it may have seemed like forever, like we're talking tonight, this is gonna be forever, but you took, uh, one of the most historic old, you know, dilapidated homes, and now you're living in it.
Yeah, and we love it. We absolutely love living downtown. It's, it's wonderful. I mean, just being able to walk out of our house and then walk downtown and see the capital and walk through the commercial district, and, you know, we have two children, um, under three years old that we're raising in the house, and, you know, I, we love living there, and we love our neighbors, and, you know, even though, like I mentioned, the towers as being kind of, um, a large looming thing to have there, we love all of our neighbors there too, everybody. It's a great neighborhood to live in, um, and we really want more neighbors. So, um, we want more neighbors and, uh, in the properties that are there. So thank you for the opportunity to live where we do, cause we do love it.
You're welcome. Thanks for being a success story for this process. Thank you. Uh, and we have one more, I think, speaker that is interested. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, City Councilman. Um, I'm Diane Tobin, and I just wanted to tell you that, um, the compost area is very important to us and a lot of Jeff City taxpayers. Um, burning's not an option for us. Uh, we are trying to do a small part of keeping the air clean, so we don't do that. Um, I know the neighbors across the street, um, they have a creek behind them, so they dump the leaves in the creek. Um, we're not gonna do that either. So, um, I hope that you reconsider just, um, not for just one year, we need it ongoing, um, because it is very important to us. And, uh, so old folks don't have a whole lot of money, so we just, um, have to use these free resources to us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that wraps up the, um...
Madam Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilman Hensley?
May I respond to a comment that was made by two speakers?
Yes.
And just to clarify, uh, when we, when this, when the council, uh, passes a budget, we only do so for a single fiscal year. So we're only doing this for our next fiscal year. We can't permanently appropriate funding for any particular use out indefinitely into the future. So we are, everything we are funding is for one year, uh, because that's, that's all we do in, in a particular fiscal year's budget. Uh, and with respect to the compost contract in particular, it's my understanding that we're going into the final year of a five-year contract. So, uh, this would be the last year of this particular contract anyhow. So it's, it's not that we are sort of doing stopgap work necessarily, it's simply the nature of how we budget to go on a, on a year-by-year basis. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Can I ask a question to follow up to that? Mr. Hensley, how do you sign a five-year contract with somebody if you do it year-by-year?
I, well, I, I might refer to Ryan, but in terms of appropriations, we appropriate money on a year-by-year basis. And we can commit to receiving services for longer than that, but we can't, we don't appropriate out more than one fiscal year.
I think that's a thoughtful, uh, explanation. Well, thanks.
Okay, so that concludes item 10. Presentations from the gallery, I don't think I missed any one. Um, so we have consent agenda, and then we're gonna take up the compost site. Would there be any objection to going ahead and taking up 14A and coming back to consent a couple of the bills and resolutions so that we could maybe take up people who are here for the compost site? And then we have Scholastic and then Capitol Avenue. Any objection to doing that? Okay. Why don't we go ahead, unless there's someone here, if I skip over something and you're here for it, just please raise your hand and pipe up. Otherwise, let's do 14A, which is the informal calendar 2022-52.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2022, to October 31, 2023, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes, this is the operating budget for fiscal year 23. Um, this takes into account all of the modifications that were made during the budget meetings and placed on the parking lot. The proposed general fund budget is projected at $37,996,179, and the total operating budget, uh, which includes the other funds and capital projects, brings the total FY23 operating budget to 78,000, I'm sorry, $78,632,185. And this again does not include the composting, um, appropriation that will be taken up separately under the introduced bill. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions? Councilman Hensley?
Uh, I, I don't know if I need to do this or not at this point, but I would like to take this off the informal for consideration and a vote tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmen, and for also being our budget chair. Any discussion on the bill? Mr. Mollman?
Yeah, there is a substitute, uh, of, of course, and so the, it's, uh, the familiar two-step process where the substitute has to be, uh, adopted and the, uh, and then the, uh, the ordinance approve as, as substituted.
Okay, so at this time, I will ask if there is, we'll have some discussion on the substitute. Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
I move to accept the substitute.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so now we will, um, take up the bill as substituted. Any discussion on the substituted bill? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I'll just thank everyone who contributed to the process this year. This was, uh, a more, I think, involved in a much longer process and a more complicated one because of a number of factors that are, uh, out of any individual's control. Uh, and I'm, you know, I just appreciate the, the teamwork that went into it, and I'm, uh, satisfied for now with what we're gonna walk out of this meeting tonight with in terms of a, uh, a, a budget for next fiscal year. Plenty of, plenty of work left, uh, for into the future, but, um, appreciate everyone's, everyone's input and I think sitting through about twice as many budget meetings as we usually have on the heels of all that ARPA work and the, and the, uh, the salary increase, um, discussion. So it's, it's been, uh, I think, a lot of, uh, extra consideration and work and, and deliberation, and definitely a lot of extra, uh, time devoted by, uh, our great staff in, uh, the, uh, financial department and, um, and of course, staff around the rest of the, of city government for, uh, um, their individual budget. So thank you to Ms. Perry, uh, for her leadership on the staff side, uh, and thanks to everyone again for their input.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley, also for taking the lead of that budget committee. Any further discussion on the bill? If, uh, Councilman Spencer?
Just a quick question for clarification. The, um, salary, uh, plan for staff, those, uh, pay ranges were not adjusted, right? They, they remain in place?
Correct. We did not modify based on the early implementation of increases that were done in 22.
Correct. Okay, just, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. As substituted, so, uh, and then we'll come back to consent agenda. Why don't we take up 2022-71, which pertains to the, um, sales tax G funding? Does that make sense to do that one next? And we'll come back to some of these others so that we can, um, allow people to go home if they're not here for these items. So 2022-71.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the FY 2023 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating additional funds within the sales tax G Capital Improvement Tax Fund and defunding funding specific items in the general fund.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes, this bill would supplementally appropriate funds within sales tax G for central maintenance vehicle and equipment parts. Currently, uh, in the budget that was just approved, those central maintenance vehicle and equipment parts were in the general fund. So it removes those items from the general fund. It funds them out of the gleaning money for sales tax G, and in turn, the funds that have now been made available in the general fund by defunding the central maintenance parts will fund the composting contract for the FY23 timeframe. I hope that makes sense.
Okay.
I think she did that all in one breath, too. I'm not...
And, uh, I do see a request to suspend the rules.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd request that we suspend the rules so that we may third read and vote on this item tonight.
Okay. Any objections to that? Seeing none, we will take up 2022-71.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the FY 2023 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating additional funds within the sales tax G Capital Improvement Tax Fund and defunding funding specific items in the general fund.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make a comment, and I compliment Councilman Hensley for the work he's done on the budget and probably over the last 72 hours, the work done on, on funding this, this project. And I agree wholeheartedly his comment that we appropriate dollars one year at a time. But I think it's also safe to say that it was message received by council, and I'll speak just for me. I appreciate the members of the public that weighed in on this issue. I mean, we tried to get things done, and as Councilman indicated, there was a lot of pieces, a lot of moving parts on the budget. We probably fumbled this one initially, and I think the public weighing in gives us that opportunity to reconsider things. So I, I appreciate everybody that communicated with us. Can't speak for everybody, but the communications I got were very professional. People were just asking to, for us to reconsider, to take a look at it, and, you know, I think the Councilman and Councilman Spencer did a, a great job of kinda trying to bird dog this issue through as we were going through the budget process. Unfortunately, we didn't find the funding, the initial pass-through, but, you know, we, we were able, and, you know, pretty soon, a few minutes, we're gonna vote to make sure that, that that is sustained for the, this year. But I think it's, it's message received that as, you know, most or many around this table will be here next year as we prepare a, a 2024 budget, that I'm guessing this will be in that, that budget. And, you know, I think, again, it, it just shows the value of having our community engaged with us. It, it is so great to look out and see people sitting in the audience and engaging, and again, it, it was in a very professional manner, and I think we're gonna end up with a better product because we were all, we're, we're involved, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any other discussion, deliberation on the bill? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. All right, thank you. So as far as I know, that covers everything on the compost site, so thank you to those of you who are here for it, and Mr. Shepherdley. Um, and I wanna make sure I don't skip over anyone else that may be waiting in the audience. I know if we go in order, the next thing we would hit would be Resolution 32. We have Scholastic here, and then after that, we have new business for Capitol Avenue. Is there anyone here that's not here for those two items? Would there be any objection to going on to Scholastic and then Capitol Avenue and then come back to do everything else? Any objection from council? Even though that's out of order a bit, so that those who are here can get home. Okay. So the next item, we will skip to Resolution 2022-32. Uh, Mrs. Donaldson?
A resolution of official intent of the council of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, for the issuance of the city's taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount of approximately $30 million to finance a project for the benefit of Scholastic Incorporated and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This resolution of intent is essentially the first step in a long process, uh, for an expansion project at the Scholastic facilities here in Jefferson City. This project, um, is seeking some, uh, tax abatement, uh, through Chapter 100 of the Missouri statutes, uh, through the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds. Um, in addition, this resolution, um, is a necessary step for, uh, the, uh, the applicant to pursue some, uh, sales and use tax, uh, exemption certificates from the Missouri Department of Economic Development to, uh, further assist in the expansion project. Uh, Mr. Luke Holtschneider from JC Rep. is here. I believe also representatives some for, uh, from Scholastic are here, so I would turn it over to Luke, um, for a few words on, on the project itself.
Welcome.
Good evening, and appreciate the agenda, um, you know, change-up that works well for a lot of us. But, um, so Ryan hit on, uh, most of the topics here, so, um, Scholastic has been, um, you know, as a corporation, uh, in existence for well over 100 years now, and they've had a presence in Jefferson City for more than 50 years. And, um, over that time, they have been a tremendous community partner. In their footprint, um, you know, while you may be witness to it and you kinda drive by it a lot, um, sometimes just to understand that they have more than one and a half million square feet under roof in Jefferson City. Uh, they're one of our region's largest private employers, uh, with seasonal, part-time, full-time, well over a thousand, uh, local residents are, um, are, are supported through Scholastic operations here in Jefferson City. And, um, they are truly a great community partner in what they give back to the community. So, um, you know, when talking to, uh, Plant Manager Heath Garvin and TMI Shoot with their VP of Human Resources, um, this is a great opportunity for Scholastic to continue to reinvest into this community. Um, the fulfillment center out there, um, in the Algo Industrial Park has been in operation for, um, I believe, a little over 30 years, and some of that operation is original still. And so this would be a reinvestment into, uh, a very large operation, which does require a substantial financial commitment from the company, uh, but does, uh, support a, um, a lasting impression and, uh, kind of their commitment to this community, uh, both from an employment and a financial commitment. So, uh, really look forward to supporting them, and, um, you know, as far as the process is concerned as well, uh, when hearing of this opportunity and, um, determining levels and willingness of support, we did, uh, bring together members of the city, city council, county commission, um, Jeff City's, uh, public schools as well, to discuss the project and the approach and, uh, the use of the Chapter 100 personal property tax abatement to, uh, help incentivize, but also ultimately help, uh, convey that support for this development in the community. And, um, it was overwhelmingly supported among all those parties in attendance, so, um, you know, happy to answer any questions that I can as well, uh, members from Scholastic that are here as well.
Thank you, and we appreciate you being here, as well as, uh, Mrs. Shoot and Mr. Garvin. Um, any council questions at this time? Or is there a motion to approve Resolution 32?
So moved.
Weisman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Resolution passes, and thank you for what Scholastic does for our community, and we wish you the best in this, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Fitzwater.
We also have the recently married Mr. Holtschneider, so congratulations to him on his.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on your marriage.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, right. Yes, your wife is wondering where you're at so late. It's City Hall, they'll believe that.
It all counts to me.
Right. We have cookies, so help yourself here if you want. Okay. And so now we'll take up Capitol Avenue, I believe, if I'm correct, the next one would be Item eighteen, new business, so Capitol Avenue demolitions. Mr. Mollman, did I skip anything leading up to this that we need to take up first on that? On the Capitol Avenue discussion?
No.
Okay. So, under eighteen, new business, we have the list in front of us, so give us a brief recap if there's any action necessary, I believe there's not unless council chooses to move any demolitions forward, would you recap for us?
Sure, so before the city council on the agenda night, we prepared essentially a table to help the city council kind of synthesize the information that's been provided, and if you take a look at the right-hand column on the table on the agenda, says demolish, yes or no? If the city council votes to demolish a property, we expect that work will begin very quickly, maybe even within the week. If the city council votes to not demolish any property, or does not take any action on any property, you know, then the city will send that property through the call for interested party process. There's nothing magical about tonight, this is the first opportunity where all information that the city council has asked for is now in the city council's possession. And so from a staff perspective, or a staff perspective, the demolition decision is, is, is ready for decision, does not mean that a decision has to be made tonight. You know, it could be well within the, the city council's prerogative to move on this to a further meeting, but from staff perspective, we are not going to provide any more information unless the city council asks for it affirmatively. So whatever process or procedure the city council would like to employ to go through these properties is, is appropriate, there's, there's nothing formal on how the city council has to take it up. So we just try to prepare the information for you guys to have to, to make this tough decision. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and if council wants to move forward with the call for interested parties at the next council meeting, say, for example, do they need to give you that direction this evening?
That, that, that is a, an appropriate direction, I mean, so the call for interested parties is something that has already been approved by the plan, so the, we don't need any formal direction to start that, so, so in theory, if the city council said, start it, we could start it, you know, tomorrow. We don't think we can get out the, the call quite yet, there's some, some work that needs to go into that, so, so we can start that process as the city council, as soon as the city council wants us to start it. So, so.
To give you enough time, like you said, you can't do it tomorrow, you said two weeks, is that fair to say the next council meeting? What, what works for you? So that we give you direction you can follow there?
If, if the direction is to start the process, we will start it immediately. If I got direction tonight, my hope is to have it out before the end of the month, not the next council meeting.
Okay.
So you, my understanding, you said you wanted to allow for four weeks?
That is, that is, that's where I have landed, the information has been out for a substantial amount of time, over a month for, for the, for the larger portion, and in two or three weeks for the, for the from the portion that we receive from the housing authority. So if the city council would like that to be extended out longer, that is your prerogative to direct staff to do so. Four weeks is a fairly common type of timeframe that we would see in other types of bidding type of environments. So if, if the city council wants to shorten that, or wants to lengthen that, that is your prerogative, but without direction, I would say that we would land at the four weeks.
So that's, that's four weeks after invitation.
Four weeks after, after publicly, after, yeah, after it publicly gets out, and we think it'd take a couple of weeks to get it out.
So council could theoretically make a motion tonight, call for interested parties by the end of October, like you stated, and allow four weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Did I see Spencer or Fitzwater first now, Fitzwater and then Spencer, thank you.
I was just going to make a, a comment, I'll try to keep it brief. I'm seriously concerned about many of these properties, and I, I think the presentation tonight kind of highlighted some of the concerns that we've had initially coming from our staff and, you know, reinforced tonight. And I think the document that Mr. Melman put out in April that he sent, I think resented to us today, just to refresh, lays out that the process that he has indicated to us, which is where we're at right now, that we have the ability to move forward on some of those properties. But I also agree with a couple of the speakers that the pursuit presumed intent the night that we went through the discussion was that the public would have an opportunity to come back to the process that, that you were just talking back about. So, I mean, I think the document very clearly gives us authority to move tonight, I think the perception that night was that there would be a chance before we did take that action, so I would support trying to implement that process to send out the call to make sure that even though the, the document clearly gives us the authority, that, that we're giving every opportunity for those properties, but my inclination is if, if that process does not come up with serious bidders, that we need to move forward protecting our public safety and our community. But I, me, me personally, and I'm only speaking for me, I think it's fair to live up to that perception and to allow that, that process to move forward.
Is that going to be in the form of a motion, do you want to to do the call for interested parties?
I would solidify the, the discussion, the, the call for interested parties and the timeframes that were discussed. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, I think this council has done an amazing job over the last six months of moving a process forward, so it's hard to delay it, but I think that is what we've committed to the community. Again, the document allows us to, not to do that, but I think that's what we've committed, so yes, long answer your question, I would make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, and then the ending part was the four weeks, I know, did you want to leave that in there?
Yeah, whatever the recommended, the, the four weeks, that, we, we need to put some ending date on it that, that we proceed, and, you know, hopefully the individuals that have testified, they were here in April, so they've had not access to the property, but plenty of time to at least think about and walk around from the outside and, and take a look at, they've now seen a very detailed report. They can't come back and say they did not know what the costs were. Some of them have been involved in projects, so maybe they have a better indication of what the costs are, but it gives everybody an opportunity to try to resolve, because I agree with Mr. Jet. And we've talked about the fact that we've got a massive investment at the state capitol over the next few years, we've got a massive investment in a project that you've done a great job of spearheading at the prison. In addition to what the state's going to do, we have a responsibility to do the best job we can to preserve the connection point between those two projects, Capitol Avenue being that, so a little more time is frustrating, but I think it's, in my opinion, again, I'm only one vote, it's the best way to proceed so that we make sure that everybody's involved.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, and then Councilman Spencer and then Schreiber.
Yeah, I, I would be open to that, but I would like to streamline the timetable as much as we possibly can. I think, you know, the news outlets and people that are interested in these properties are well aware what's out there. So, you know, I just, I have a real concern of, of having these properties left for another four weeks, six weeks, whatever the case may be, and still, you know, having to go through, through the process, through the courts of, of acquiring them. So however, and whatever we can do to streamline it, to get it, to get it to a finality, if you will, that's what I would propose. I, to maybe calm Mr. Jet's concerns, I will remove any interest of, of taking down four fifteen commercial until he has, you know, the opportunity to, to take a look, obviously from, from a distance, but to give him some comfort level on that, I will not pursue that any further.
Thank you, Councilman Schreiber.
I support what Councilman Fitzwater put forth. I think that this whole situation is rather tragic, and, and in all fairness to the city staff and everything, it's, it's been a case of demolition by neglect, as we know. And that demolition by neglect has not been due to anything that the, the city staff has done, they've had their, their hands tied and had to go through the legal process, and so we've tried to expedite that as much as possible in the last few months. I, I certainly support giving people the opportunity to, to to come forward with some attempts to obtain these properties. There's no doubt, I've done a lot of research on them myself and the people that have lived there, and they definitely have a, a definite connection to the, the history of our city, and it's probably the last remnant of old Jefferson City as such. And they certainly have a connection to many of the people that were directly involved in the the industrial aspects of the prison, so I, I don't think it hurts for us to, to give a little bit more time, but I also agree with Councilman Spencer that we don't need to keep dragging it out further and further, because with every rain and every snow and every wind, they're just going to deteriorate more and more, so I hope, I really hope genuinely that people come forward and show an interest in, in, in wanting to try to, to acquire some of these properties. Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, Count, or, Mr. Mollman?
Thank you, so the way I understand the motion, it's essentially to proceed with the call for interested parties immediately. Which is great, I'm happy to move forward on that, but because it is moving a little more quickly, I have a question that I need answered by the city council that I was not quite prepared to take up this evening, but here we are. In the in the bid guarantee agreement, one of the things that we've been contemplating is should there be a specification of a minimum bid, a minimum cash bid? And so the, the question is, is does the city council want to put some sort of minimum bid that must be guaranteed, as opposed to just saying you will make a bid? And, and so like I said, I wasn't quite prepared to take this up this evening, but it, it is something that if it's going to be part of the agreement, it needs to be part of the agreement and, and, and told upfront to the public. The last thing we want to do is get into a proposal process and say, hey, you have to make a minimum bid. So if there is any direction that, that the city council would like to provide, that would be helpful to staff.
Councilman Spencer?
I, I would like to start at least with the discussion about a percentage of, of market value. Whether that's one, five percent, whatever, whatever.
So this is not, this is not the escrow amount? This is, this is to say, if you make a bid, it must conform to these requirements, and, and one requirement is a cash bid of no less than.
Right, and that's where, where I was coming with that, so.
Okay.
Councilman Fitzwater?
And I, I agree with Councilman Spencer, I mean, we went through this with four, four oh eight Lafayette, and we got a very low bid, I think we need to put some parameters, now, how we set that number, I'm not sure, but I think we need to put, if, if we are going at risk of allowing these buildings to continue to stand, individuals that want to work with us, we want to make sure that they're serious about it. And, you know, the last thing we need is someone that's not serious about it, that ties up a piece of property in the middle of a block, so, I mean, I think that is a realistic request from council that it be a serious initial bid. Thanks.
Councilwoman Ward?
Although, don't we have to take in consideration that it could be a year out before we have access to them, that, that, and they're going to go down? You know, so that market value is going to go down, and they're already putting up a escrow amount? Just throwing that out there, that the market value is going to go down after a year of being opened up to the elements. How did the housing authority handle their bidding? Did they set a limit or a market percentage of a market value?
They did not, because we backfilled any, any shortfall. They, they had no financial reason to do that.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
And it was based on the proposals too, because a lot of the proposals were, like, you know, we have a proposer in the room, it was based on what, what they were going to do. Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, you know, I, I understand the, the need sometimes for, for minimum bids. I think also I mean, these, you know, what we were saying, the, the builder grade estimates on rehabbing any of these properties are totally daunting, I mean, unimaginable for, for most people. So, I mean, just taking on that burden alone, you know, indicates to me that maybe we shouldn't try to wring as much out of the sale as, as we might be able to get, perhaps some percentage of assessed value or, or something like that, but I, I don't know that, you know, I don't know that we really get a whole lot out of trying to get anything more than something fairly nominal for these properties, we've, we've just had a very in-depth presentation about their conditions. So, you know, we're, we're not, we're not trying to sell move-in-ready property to, to most folks. So, yeah, I, I mean, if we set something, you know, I would, I would be perfectly comfortable with it being some, some, some percentage of, you know, something fairly stable. It would, it would be a different dollar amount, I think, for each property, obviously, but simply a, a percentage of the current assessed value or something like that.
Yeah, it, it, swirling this around in my head, it was a percentage of the fair market value of the costs set by the court, because this would be post-acquisition.
That makes sense, I'm sure.
I think that's a, I think that's a, a reasonable way to set the target, now, what that percentage is. I think.
And that would be fair market value at the time?
Fair market value as set by the court, so that's done by the court commissioners, usually that's a few months before the actual transfer.
But not as improved, it's?
No, at the time.
As is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Of what the city would have to pay in in order to acquire it.
Okay, and what sort of things is that normally based on?
It's, so it's, it's set by three commissioners appointed by the court, and, and usually they have some sort of expertise in real estate construction, you know, land development, and so it's, it's just a fair market value after, after a hearing process that they set, so generally, these, these properties are coming in in the, I would say, twenty thousand to fifty thousand dollar range. I believe the fair market value, just, just for example's sake, the fair market value of Ivy Terrace was fifty thousand dollars. Thereabouts.
So twenty-five percent, fifty percent? Perhaps somewhere in there?
Yeah, I just, I just want to be able to provide more information, I don't ever want to get into a gotcha process with the public, I want to provide them as much information. to get into a gotcha process with the public. I want to provide them as much information as possible in a process that is going to have lots of unknowns. I don't want any unknowns to come from our end.
Okay, I'll throw it out there. I'll set, I'll propose fifteen percent of the fair market value as found through the court process Ryan just described as a minimum bid for each property.
And, and the, I'm sorry, I may have brought this up to begin with, but we do anticipate these to be bid in a competitive environment, and so the greater the bid, the more competitive your bid is.
Sure, as a minimum, though, if we're talking about.
As a minimum, I think a percentage of the fair market value, fifteen, that's as good as any other number, I think, but just to make sure that there is, once again, some reasonable expectations of financial participation in the process.
You have a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sanders?
I just want to ask Ryan if he is sure that he has heard what the council said. I'm not sure I did. In terms of the escrow amount right now, I believe he stated it would be one percent or five thousand dollars, whichever is greater. I didn't know, I thought I heard the discussion go down the path of changing that or not. I just want to be sure we were on the same page.
And the escrow could then go into their?
Yes, that's, that's the intent, is that the escrow will be used to offset the purchase price.
Councilman Spencer?
One dollar, two uses.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Spencer, and then Sanders, why don't we let Mr. Sanders?
Let me just finish my thought real quick. The rehabilitation cost that was in the estimate by the consultants, or the, where is that cost coming from, is my question?
Yes, the consultant's numbers.
Mr. Sp, Councilman Spencer?
I just noticed there might have been some interest in maybe sharing a comment from the, from the audience that, that might want to share their thoughts.
If you could make it into the mic just real quick, that might be.
One of the things we were concerned about when Ryan was talking about the fair market value, does that put another delay in the process of getting that fair market value before people can actually put in an intention and their plans?
No, so, so the fair market value is set by the court, and so that will be part of the process. So, this is a minimum bid price when proposals come in.
And that's besides the initial five thousand or whatever that amount is that's determined?
Yes, yes, and so, so, yeah, so any successful bidder would be able to use that escrow and apply it to the purchase price.
Okay, so there's a motion from Councilman Hensley.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, and, did you have a comment too, Councilman Spencer? Okay, second, okay. Any further discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mollman.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the direction.
Okay, and also, Mrs. Dietz did want to maybe speak with you offline about the rehab process of gathering items from the homes that Mr. Jett had made a comment about. So, perhaps maybe tomorrow you two can connect on that. Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss with Ms. Dietz at any time.
Thank you. So, I think that concludes Capitol Avenue, correct? I covered everything. I mean, there is the Capitol Avenue.
At least this portion of it.
Yeah, there's the other redevelopment, but, okay. So, now we'll go through the rest of the agenda. Item eleven, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through E? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Councilman Fitzwater would like to take up F to add some clarification and attention on that. So, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is to accept the community development block grant, the disaster recovery money, which is, which was allotted to parts of Holt, St. Charles, and Cole County after the May 2019 tornado and floods. The state was the one that actually did the planning process and putting everything together. So, a lot of times you'll hear us talk about our consolidated plan and our action plan. Well, the state was the one that did that. They did the public involvement and had put together the grant program. As a gentleman in the AV booth has put up the, sort of the summary of what we intend to and what we've applied for and plan to accept funding for. The whole project is about seven point three million dollars, of which two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars can be used by the city for city staff to administer the program. That is common in these CDBG programs. The next item is acquisition of property for demolition for two hundred thousand dollars. New single-family construction, five hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. The big one is the multifamily. This ties into the development projects that came before the council regarding the Lytec funding. The state put that number in there for about five million dollars. That is going to be, I think, administered by the state. They'll be the ones doling out that money for the developers, probably based on a recommendation by the city staff. I'm not sure where that is in the process, the Lytec process. I believe we're going to hear in the next couple of months of what their rankings are. Down payment assistance, that's a program we use quite a bit. Normally, it's a five thousand dollar down payment assistance based on qualifications. Homeowner rehabilitation, that two hundred thousand dollars would be for individual property owners to be able to repair their homes as needed. Infrastructure to support housing, that'd probably be one of the latter decided projects, because you'd want to do the project where it is going to be supporting one of these new housing developments, perhaps, or an existing one, or just even part of the city that has old infrastructure that needs some carrying. And then public service, housing counseling, that's normally something that's affiliated with the down payment assistance program. And then also, planning, planning quarter million dollars for mitigation and resiliency. So, that can either be by staff or by a consultant. That is something that the state put in for all the folks that got the grant. They figured we need some mitigation and resiliency planning as part of their disaster relief program. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and if Rachel is still on, I'd hate to put her on the spot, but if we really need to, we can ask her to. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate Ms. Senzi for staying on the line with us. If she has anything to add, she can pipe in. Otherwise, I know you did a good job of summarizing. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, and I appreciate that summarization. I know this was handled appropriately. It should be on the consent calendar, but our staff has done an amazing job of helping to bring these dollars to the community, and I just felt it was appropriate to pull it off of the consent and just say thank you for all the work. I know we've got a lot of work to do on some of the items, but, I mean, we're going to, we're going to push forward and deal with some of those issues, but our staff has done a great job of identifying dollars, and I know there are more dollars out there. Ms. Senzi kind of talked at the last planning and public works. So, I just wanted to say we appreciate the work, and I just felt like sliding through with the consent was probably not the way to do it. It ought to be highlighted. So, thanks for the report.
Thank you. Is there a, so that looks like a motion from Councilman Fitzwater to approve item F. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Is, for clarification, are those dollars in these individual accounts, or are they somewhat fluid to where? I believe part of the grant acceptance memo, the finance department is actually defining accounts for those to go in with that dollar amount. The grant probably tells us what we can move around and how much. I'm more familiar with DOT grants on AMCDPG, but at some point, there is flexibility. Normally, it's, you know, you have to work with the state, say this is why, and go from there, but.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, bills introduced, 2022-69.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending section eight dash seven special assignments of the personnel policy manual.
Captain Heisler?
This is an amendment to the personnel policy manual, removing additional pay for the SWAT commander. It's kind of cleaning up stuff to make it more congruent with the current contract that the city has with the fraternal order police.
Okay, any questions? All right, move to item B, 2022 dash zero seventy.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, finding that the area described as the Capitol Avenue redevelopment area is a blighted area as defined in chapter three fifty-three of the revised statutes of Missouri, as amended in that the redevelopment of such area is necessary and in the public interest approving a development plan for such area, approving the exercise of the power of eminent domain and providing further authority.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This ordinance would approve a development plan for the Capitol Avenue redevelopment area. This redevelopment plan, or development plan, undertakes a couple of critical statutory steps for the use of three fifty-three to acquire properties through the use of eminent domain. The first thing that this does, it approves a development plan. The development plan essentially states that the city will acquire property through the use of eminent domain and then seek private redevelopers through a competitive RFP bidding process. The second component is an approval of the use of eminent domain to acquire properties under this plan, and the third step is that it approves a blight study for the Capitol Avenue redevelopment area. In this iteration, the Capitol Avenue redevelopment area is smaller than the original redevelopment area that was approved by the housing authority back in 2016. I believe this is limited to about twenty-two properties, all owned by the same, by a single property owner. And so, the plan excludes other areas that have already kind of gone through a redevelopment process through the housing authority, and this is kind of a tighter, more narrow focus. The properties are generally along the four hundred, five hundred block of East Capitol with extensions out to Jackson Street and both north and south, and I believe a dip to Marshall Street, past the five hundred block. The blight study uses the 2016 blight study and updates it. The information is attached. It's a fairly lengthy document, but it, like I said, it checks some pretty important statutory boxes. This is not a final decision on the use of eminent domain. There are some additional procedures that are required under the condemnation procedures, statutes of Missouri. So, once this is approved, the city council will also see some additional items to approve the actual use of eminent domain under chapter five twenty-three, but like I said, this is an important step in that process. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. There will be a public hearing at the November seventh meeting consistent with requirements of state law.
We are wrapping up item twelve B.
Okay, perfect. Any questions or discussion? All right, we've done C, we've done pending A and B. So, that brings us to item C, 2022-68.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for the concrete street repair project.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as the clerk stated, this is a bill that would authorize a construction contract with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated doing concrete street repair in various locations within town, and is funded by use of some of our ARPA funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Bill passes, and we've taken up the informal, so we're on item fifteen, resolution twenty-nine.
A resolution authorizing the city to execute a subrecipient agreement with Cole County for the fire tower.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This is accepting the grant from ARPA funds within Cole County to support the burn tower project, which would include both the drill tower and the fire burn building. We currently are reviewing RFQs for design and engineering consultants for this project, and we hope to have a recommendation for city council very soon. We appreciate the county and their support of this very important project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Schofield or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Resolution passes, item twenty-two thirty.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing application for a survey project through the Historic Preservation Fund Grant.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This would be a survey of phase three of the West Main Street area for historic resources. The whole project, we anticipate, would be twenty-three thousand dollars, of which thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars would be this grant if we are accepted, and there'd be a nine thousand, two hundred dollar match. Basically, it's a sixty, forty grant that we would have to identify in the future. We believe this grant would be awarded at sort of at the, about the same time as it is now, next year, and the grant money would probably have to come from fiscal year 2024, which I have no idea what's in there at this point. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Resolution passes, resolution twenty-two thirty-one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similar situation, except this is reserving, resur surveying an area that was done back in nineteen ninety-two because not all of it was captured. The dollar amounts are different. The whole project, we anticipate, would be fifty thousand dollars. It is a larger area, and a thirty thousand dollars of that would be the grant if we are awarded, and we'd have to determine where twenty thousand dollars would be identified in a future budget. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, and we will let Mrs. Donaldson read the resolution.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing application for a survey project through the Historic Preservation Fund Grant.
Trying to get us out of here sooner, Sonny. Any questions? Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Is there a motion to?
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to get us out of here too.
So moved.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Resolution passes, item sixteen. We have no one else signed up, but Gary Day is still here to presentations from the gallery on other topics. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Item seventeen, council and staff discussion, presentation topics. Item eighteen, any new business? Item nineteen, any unfinished business? Item twenty, Councilwoman Wiseman, waiting all night for this? All right, we are adjourned, and happy birthday, Councilman Spicer, Councilwoman Ward, and happy anniversary. I know this is how y'all wanted to spend your birthday and anniversary nights with us. All right, we are adjourned.